And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to begin this evening with a recognition of UNC Asheville's Chancellor, Mary Kay Grant, who is here along with her team. And I'm going to come down. I have a little gift and a few words, and then if you would like to say a few words. We are honored tonight to have Dr. Mary Kay Grant and her husband with us here tonight. And so a little information about Dr. Grant, now Chancellor Grant, was named UNC Asheville's Seventh Chancellor in August of 2014, joining the university in January of 2015 after serving for 12 years as President of Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. She also has served as the Chief Academic Officer and Deputy CEO of UMass Online, and was a Senior Fellow at the John W. McCormick Institute of Public Affairs at the University of Massachusetts at Boston, where she held several key administrative positions, including Director of the Center for Social Policy, and Assistant Vice Chancellor for Administration and Finance and Human Resources. She also served as Chair of the institute's faculty. As President of the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts, she oversaw growth and enrollment, strengthened the connections between the college and the community, and launched the college's first comprehensive capital campaign. For her longstanding efforts and contributions, Dr. Grant received the 2014 Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts Distinguished Alumni's Award, as well as the 2014 New England Board of Higher Education's Massachusetts State Merit Award. She holds a Bachelor's Degree in Sociology, a Master's Degree in Public Affairs from UMass Boston, and a PhD in Social Policy from the Heller School at Brandeis University, and an honorary degree from Williams College. Welcome. This is your first time here, I think before us as City Council, and because UNC Asheville is such a strong partner, we wanted to bring you a warm welcome here tonight. And I know you have a number of folks here with you, and if you'd like to say a few words, we would love that. And I also have a gift for you from the city of Asheville.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of the Council. What a great honor to be here with all of you this evening. And I want to just begin my very brief thank you, because you have a very full agenda, by recognizing your public service and your commitment to the city. Being here in this city at this time, I feel like we have landed in such a special place with so many committed, dedicated public servants and citizens in this community. And the University of North Carolina Asheville is at the heart of so many of what's happening, so many of the great things that are happening. We are partners. We have 3,500 alumni who live in the city of Asheville. That's a very impressive group of stakeholders. This year, we have our largest freshman class coming into the university in the history of the college, and over 100 of those, I think about 150 of those students are from Asheville. So this is not only a world-class, public liberal arts university, we are your public university. So be a Bulldog fan, come cheer us on loudly. We partner in the schools. One of my very first pieces of engagement was with the YWCA back in January, where I had the privilege to sit on the floor and cut out letters with a third grader. And I have to tell you, her skills were far superior to mine. But I thought, what a wonderful place. Communities do their best work when we partner with one another. We are a partner, and we are here at such a good time, thanks to the great work all of you have done. I want to also congratulate all the soccer players in the room. We have a great school for you right up the street. But thank you. Thank you for your warm welcome. I'm delighted to be here in North Carolina. I'm most delighted to be here in the city of Asheville, and it has nothing to do with leaving the cold New England winter behind. Nothing at all. So thank you, Mayor. We look forward to more good work together in this incredible city. You have a gem here. You have a gem, and you work so hard at it, and you've made such great progress. You should be proud of the work that you're doing, and we're proud to partner with you on the good things that are certain to come, including the challenges that lie ahead. So thank you for this. It's a delight. I'm here with many of my teammates from UNC Asheville. John Pass, Bill Hagerd is here. Greg is here with me, Greg Carter, Luke Bukowski, and Phyllis Stiles, by the way, who's here for another reason, is also one of our gems at UNC Asheville. So thank you. We're delighted to be here with you in this tremendous city that we now have the privilege to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. And you gave us hats. We really like them. Everybody, your hats. Yes.
Everybody's a recruiter. So thank you very much.
Okay, and next, we have something very special. And to show that I'm totally open-minded about whoever wins state championships, even though I'm an Asheville grad, we're going to recognize the Reynolds Rocket Girls Soccer Team that's here. Please come on up, all of you. And I think your principal is here. Doris Sellers, possibly. And your coach?
Coaches.
Coaches. Okay, this is a really exciting moment for us. I think the last time we did it, didn't we have the Tourist Baseball Team in here? Something like that. So let's see. This is your coach, Coach Gladys. I'm going to read a proclamation, and then if you all want to say a few words, that would be great. All right, ready. Whereas it is fitting and proper to honor and recognize the A.C. Reynolds Women's Soccer Team for their achievement of winning the state 3A Women's Soccer Championship. Whereas A.C. Reynolds edged Swansboro 2-1 at Dale Soccer Field at North Carolina State University, and whereas the Rockets ended the year with a 24-4 record. And whereas this was A.C. Reynolds' first visit to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Women's Soccer State Finals, and whereas special recognition is extended to all team members, to Coach Patrick Gladys and his staff, to School Principal Doris Sellers, and to all the A.C. Reynolds boosters and supporters. And whereas special recognition is also extended to all parents and guardians for their unflagging support of these outstanding student athletes and their championship team, now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim June 9, 2015, as A.C. Reynolds Women's Soccer Day. In the city of Asheville, we'll add the County of Buncombe, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate their victory. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations, Coach. Proud Coach and Principal. If you want to say a few words, you can come on up here.
Mayor Manheimer, Members of City Council, and our guests here today, this is an honor, and we thank you so much for giving our girls this chance to come and be here today. There's three groups that I would like to recognize. One, our coaching staff. They are fabulous. Coach Gladys and his staff runs a quality program, always of academic stellar. They have been recognized every year Coach Gladys has been at A.C. Reynolds High School for their academic record nationally. Oftentimes, they're doing homework on the buses. They came home early, even after the state game, because they'd gotten a little bit behind. Some of them rode home with their parents to get their homework done before exams. So they always, our coaching staff just really represents a quality program. These ladies, I thank them. They have been a joy to watch. Many of them, for all four years that I've been at Reynolds as freshmen, and we would compete and compete, and they would go deep into the playoffs every year, and we would have that really tough last-second loss deep into the playoffs. But this year, we did not have to suffer any of those losses. We were able to just experience that victory and that joy all the way until the very end. And I will never forget that moment when the game was over, watching all of them run across the field towards their fans. It was so exciting. And then the third group is the parents. As you can see here today, we have a large crowd. Our team, they have been recognized now, and they come in this kind of number. They're not just two or three. They come as a team, and their parents come with them. And every time we need anything, the parents are always there. We took the largest representation from Rocket Country to Raleigh you have ever seen, and they made a lot of noise, to the point where the coach said he could not even coach them at the end, because we were so excited. So thank you again today. I'm going to have Coach Gladys speak for you just a second, but we thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot to add to that, except that everyone in the room should be proud, the way these ladies have represented our city, our community. Being the first women's soccer team from Buncombe County to win public school state championship was quite an accomplishment. And I also want to recognize Mr. Gary Jackson in the room, who is a alumnus of our, you know, his two sons played soccer at A.C. Reynolds. He knows the work that goes into it, and it's good to see you again. And I just want to say thank you very, very much, and thank you to Miss Sellers and all the girls. And it's something we're never going to forget. Thank you.
Can each of you just, before you go, just say your name? Just tell us what year you are and your name.
I'm a junior. My name's Celine Jacoby Barham.
Senior, Dallas Warren.
Sophomore, Ellie Montez.
Junior, Brooke Reeves.
Sophomore, Haley Johnson.
Freshman, Grace Sloan.
Freshman, Haley Smith.
Sophomore, Jada Hart.
Sophomore, Leila Zefri.
Sophomore, Cara Royo.
Sophomore, Katie Kearns.
Junior, Kaylee Cross.
Senior, Victoria Turner.
Junior, Jordan Melvin.
Junior, Miranda Raj.
Senior, Megan McAllister.
Junior, Caroline Hargadon.
Junior, Ashlyn Perkins.
Freshman, Bella Ramirez.
Junior, Chris Segura.
Senior, Michaela Ballinger.
Sophomore, Gabby Cole.
Assistant Coach, Daniel Smith.
Most senior, Alan Ratliff.
Just give a second for the... All right, we have another proclamation for Pollination Celebration. And I just have to say, right now, I'm totally disappointed you're not wearing your bee outfit. We were hoping, oh, well. We'll carry on anyway. So I have a proclamation here in honor of Pollination Celebration Week. Whereas pollinator species such as native bees, honeybees, and other insects are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy and diverse ecosystems, and whereas backyard beekeepers play a major role in sustaining honeybee populations, and whereas the city of Asheville supports pollinator populations through recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including planting native species and minimizing pesticide use. And whereas in 2012, the City of Asheville City Council passed a resolution to become a Bee City USA, now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim June 11 through 21st, 2015, as Pollination Celebration Week in the city of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to recognize this observance in Asheville, the inaugural Bee City USA. And if you would like to say a few words about that, this would be great. And you probably know that I send a certificate and a welcome to all mayors who join up in becoming a Bee City. So this is very exciting for us.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, and thank you, Councilmembers. I send that letter to you to be signed, and I so appreciate that you take the time to do that. It seems like a foregone conclusion now that we have nine cities across the country and about 50 more coming on board in the next couple of years. Seattle is the largest one to join us, and Hendersonville joined recently. So it's spreading. An understanding of how important the pollinators are and what people in cities can do is spreading. But it wasn't a foregone conclusion at all. If we hadn't had the courage right here in this room to say yes, there would be no Bee City USA. So we're about to celebrate our third annual Pollination Celebration, and you're going to see bee decals in windows all throughout downtown. More than 125 shop owners have bee decals in their windows to raise awareness about how important the pollinators are. So I invite you all to join in in the Pollination Celebration events. We would be so honored to have you come and to recognize you at the events. And so mainly, I just wanted to thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to start this movement across the country. And I have some brochures that I'd love to hand those out. And there's a nice article in Mountain Express today, if you get a chance to pick it up. Thank you so much.
And our last proclamation for the evening is in honor of Korea War Day. And if I could have Bill Lack and anyone else that you would like to come up with you? Yeah. Okay, so the last time I saw you, we were at a Taekwondo tournament.
That's correct.
Just let that marinate. Just wonder about that.
And after you left, I got to replace you and hand the trophy.
Right, yeah. It's kind of an odd, but anyway. So here we go. We have a proclamation in honor of Korean War Veterans Recognition Day. Whereas the Korean War started on June 25th, 1950, and ended on July 27th, 1953, and whereas over 40,000 American soldiers died in the Korean War, and more than 100,000 were wounded, and whereas in 2009, President Barack Obama signed, well, House Resolution 2632, the Korean War Veterans Recognition Act, and whereas this act added National Korean War Veterans Armistice Day to the list of days on which the display of the flag of the United States is encouraged. And whereas this year is the 65th anniversary of the beginning of the Korean War, and it is fitting and proper to recognize June 25th as Korean War Veterans Recognition Day in honor of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in Korea. And whereas our Korean War veterans deserve our unending respect and gratitude for their courageous actions in pursuit of freedom and democracy, now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim June 25th, 2015, as Korean War Veterans Recognition Day in the city of Asheville, and urge all citizens to observe this day by flying the American flag to recognize the contributions of our Korean War veterans. Congratulations.
We didn't all come in today, because, let's face it, we got to be in their 80s, 90s, and even some are over 100 that are Korean War veterans. We were born during the Great Depression, when I had no money, because our families didn't have any jobs. We grew up during World War II, when my family had money, but there was nothing there to buy. And then we went off to high school, and as soon as you got out of high school, you were drafted into the Army. So you never even got to enjoy your college years. You had to put that off until later to come back and go to college. But it's a group that we stood together. We still stand together. I have with us today, I'm the chairman for the 24, the commander for the 24 Western North Carolina Counties. That's Chapter 314 of the Korean War Veterans Association. I have with us, Hilliard is our vice commander, and we have our chaplain with us, Giuseppe. If one of you two want to say something?
I do bring a message for the people of Korea and the government of Korea. I was blessed last year this time to be a guest of the Koreans, and was taken over there for a full week. They thanked us graciously. This time, the roads were paved, there was glass in the windows, and nobody took a shot at me. I was not drafted into the Army. I was in the Navy and then in the Marine Corps. But the message that I bring, a general officer who had retired, came back to North Carolina last June, and he presented us with various medals and citations. And he made a talk how grateful the Korean people were for what we Americans had done for them in saving their country. And he concluded by saying, of course, that was a long time ago, and you've been in a lot more wars in a lot of different places, but the Koreans are the only ones who still say thank you. They do.
Well, my name is Giuseppe Novella, and I didn't even know my name was Giuseppe until I went in the Army. I thought it was Joseph, because I went by Joseph all my life. And then when I got my birth certificate and found out my name was Giuseppe, I couldn't believe it. So I go by it now, anyway. And it's a small world, because this fellow here was in military intelligence, and so was I. I don't know how I got in there, but I spoke Italian, that's probably why. But we both were in the same outfit in time of, after the Korean War. We served in that. They wanted us to, they wanted me to take a tour of Vietnam, and I wouldn't do it, because I figured if I made it in Korea, I wouldn't make it in Vietnam, because I was young, and it probably would have been at least three tours of duty, and I don't think I would, I wouldn't be here today. So anyway, I appreciate all you people, and appreciate our government to a point, you know. But I think the country's going to be okay. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
As our mayor can testify, we have a tremendous community of Koreans living in the Asheville area. They're great people, and this trip that he took to Korea, I'm going in September. The taxpayers are not paying that, the US government's not paying that. These Korean citizens here are raising the money to send us to Korea. And I think that's something that they need to be recognized. Thank you. And Jan, this may be the last time I see you on a city council meeting, but it's been great.
Thank you, Bill.
I think the proclamations and recognitions are so much fun, we should just have a night where we just do that. But now on to the business part of the agenda. We have the consent agenda to consider, and we need to pull Item M from the consent agenda. So when and if there's a motion, please omit Item M. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Just want to make a comment.
Comment, please.
One of the items on the consent agenda tonight is Item K, a resolution to adopt a seven-year goal for affordable housing production assisted by the city of Asheville. This is the product of a lot of work from a lot of people in our community. To be able to bring forward was a historic step for Asheville City Council, which is to set some hard targets for the support and creation of affordable housing units in the city of Asheville. When the Bowen Report came out, our Housing Needs Assessment in December, we learned what we'd already known anecdotally, that we were at a 0% vacancy rate in our rental housing, that for 2/3 of the people living here, only 1/4 of the housing stock was affordable to them. And I'm grateful to this council for having taken some bold steps, and for having this on this consent agenda tonight. What it does is it sets targets over the next seven years. Bowen Report said we were going to need 5,600 rental units. These targets do not get us there. They get us halfway there, 2,800 units. And the way that we arrived at that was taking our existing partnerships, and our existing resources, and our existing tools, and looking out over the next seven years to see, well, what's possible. And what we came to is 2,800 units. This is a bold, important step that we're taking tonight with this, and it's through partners like the Housing Authority, and Habitat for Humanity, and Ward Griffin, who's going to be before us later this evening, Mountain Housing, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, Buncombe County, the Givens Estate, private developers like Kirk Booth, our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and staff, for really putting their shoulders to the wheel to let us know what's possible. That being said, I'm not one to be shackled by what's possible right now. I know that we can find a way to get those other 2,800 units. But what it's going to mean is we're going to need more partners, more resources, and more tools. And so I invite everyone to be a part of this solution with us. A healthy Asheville is a socio-economically diverse Asheville where everyone has opportunity. And so that's what this means to me tonight.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Or a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda excluding Item M.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding Item N. Anyone wishing to comment on any item on the consent agenda? Yes, please. If you'll just state your name.
Hi, everybody. I'm Paul Reeves. I'm Director of Construction Services for Asheville Area Habitat, and I am here tonight in support of Item F on the consent agenda. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city for their past, current, and future partnership with Habitat for Humanity, and for all of the hard work that you all do in support of affordable housing. And that goes for the high-level heavy lifting that City Council does, the specific and focused work of the Housing and Community Development Committee, as well as the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and the day-to-day detail work of getting the job done that city staff does all the time. This is a really exciting opportunity for the city and Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity to partner on delivering a minimum of 55 affordable housing units in the city limits, in partnership with a like number of families that are deserving, hardworking, and income-qualified. So it's a really great opportunity. It's truly a win-win proposition, both for the community and for the families that Habitat serves. So for that, I'd like to thank you all for your consideration and support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have the consent agenda approved. The next part is my part, which is the legislative update. A few items to highlight. The House has passed their budget. It's to the Senate. The Senate thought they would have a budget out this week, but they do not yet have a budget out this week. Gwen Whistler and Chris Perry and I had an opportunity to be down in Raleigh last week and met with our delegation. And we met with Senator Apodaca and talked about the pending sales tax redistribution legislation. There appears to be still debate and discussion happening on the Senate side in terms in terms of what bill the Senate will run and how they will run it. We had heard that we would see an amendment to House Bill 117 in the Senate to include sales tax redistribution along with a number of other items like J Dig, which is grant money for economic development, things like that. We expressed our concern about the proposed sales tax redistribution bills. Maggie, I think that light is going to go off. It's yellow. Anyway, thanks. And because a lot of, a lot of the proposals we've seen so far are really harmful to Buncombe County's revenue growth because it would redistribute sales tax proceeds from Buncombe County and move them out and away from Buncombe County. So in other words, sales taxes collected from sales within the county would be redistributed across the state away from Buncombe County. So the loss projections for Asheville, the other municipalities in Asheville, the school board, the fire districts, and the county are significant. And Senator Apodaca assured us that whatever bill the Senate does run with would ultimately not be harmful to Asheville and the other entities in Buncombe County that receive sales tax proceeds. And I think where the debate is going to fall down is the, how you crunch the numbers. If you look at the sales tax numbers for Buncombe County long-term, and you use very conservative growth estimates, which is what we think they're relying on, maybe 3.5% sales tax growth, then we don't see a revenue loss in as great an amount. But if you use actual historical sales tax growth for our area, which has been pretty robust as compared to other areas in the state, we really see a great loss because we're not able to capture taxes from the sales that are happening in Buncombe County, which are really growing. We're seeing on average more significantly than the average across the state. So it's a little bit of a numbers game. You know, when you, when you listen to people pushing legislation that say, that like to advocate for their position, they tend to rely on data sources that favor their position. I would just say that diplomatically. So what I need for people to do is to be really watchful about that kind of legislation. And we need to be able to react quickly because I think once it surfaces, it will be a quick process. We are seeing that the graffiti vandalism bill has been presented to the governor and I don't know whether or not he's signed it yet. My notes here don't indicate that he has. I guess it's on his desk. And the zoning, design, and aesthetic control bill is also legislation that would prevent municipalities from imposing design and aesthetic controls on certain family dwellings. This bill didn't so much affect Asheville because it exempted out historic districts, but other, I believe, if it stayed that way.
Right, yes. Historic districts, and it's only single-family and duplexes.
Right. So right now Asheville doesn't have design and aesthetic regulations over single-family duplexes, other than in historic districts, which are exempt. So it didn't affect us so much, but it was of concern generally to cities. Again, I move to erode city local control. There are other things pending at the legislature, but so that we can get through this meeting, I'm just highlighting a few things. But I think for the most immediate concern for cities right now is the fiscal impact of any of this percolating legislation because it could be pretty dramatic one way or another for cities, in a nutshell.
I'll be a little more explicit, just so citizens know what's going on. The rich counties in this state, which have the big cities, which tend to generate the most sales tax revenue, are substantially controlled by Democrats. And the poor counties that are more rural are substantially controlled by Republicans. So they're going to take sales tax away from the big counties and give it to the small counties. That's what's going on here, in an effort to force us to raise taxes so that they can run people against us and blame us for raising taxes. That's the game that's going on right now in Raleigh. That was an editorial comment.
An accurate editorial comment. Okay, so now we will move on to the public hearings portion of our agenda. And the first is a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2015-16 annual operating budget. And our finance director, Barbara Whitehorn, is here to talk to us about this. And just so everyone understands, this is the public hearing on the budget. The city council does not vote tonight on the budget. This is an opportunity for the public to see and hear about the budget and to provide any comment if you wish. That will come after the presentation.
Okay, mayor, members of council. I'm going to try to ignore this microphone because it really owned me at the last meeting. So it did. If anyone who is here knows, this microphone dipped me in last time. I'm going to read the little piece that I have to for the public hearing. Fiscal 2015-16 proposed annual operating budget was presented to council on May 26, 2015. The fiscal year 15-16 proposed budget is balanced with an ad valorem tax rate of .475 per $100 of assessed value, which represents a 1.5 cent increase over the current year tax rate. All essential city services are continued in the proposed budget. A copy of the proposed budget is available for public inspection in the city clerk's office. And the proposed budget is also available for viewing on the city's website, www.auchvillenc.gov. In accordance with North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, a summary of the proposed budget along with a notice of public hearing was published on May 29, 2015. Adoption of the fiscal 15-16 budget ordinance is scheduled for June 23, 2015, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting. The proposed budget may be changed by the city council in any way before adoption. It may also be changed by budget amendment after adoption, with the only exception being the ad valorem tax rate, which cannot be changed once the budget is adopted. Okay, so there's my little boilerplate. You all, I think, received the email that answered a few more of the questions. If I needed to clarify any of those, I'm happy to do that. We, what we are looking, what staff is looking for tonight is really direction for the budget adoption. Like, how would you like us to go from here? What do you want to see in your 15-16 budget ordinance?
Any questions for me? Everybody's happy?
Well, I'll start by just thanking you for that clarification on the community programs budget. Yeah, I really was curious what was in it. And that makes complete sense to me now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Roderick, actually, for that one.
Barbara, while you're up here, in that same message where you sent that, you discussed a little bit about the examination of Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the change in the parks maintenance facility budget and how that, those might be shifted. Can you explain that for folks who are here?
Oh, and the Affordable Housing CIP includes about $900,000 for parks maintenance moving off of that Aston Hilliard site for affordable housing. And then in addition, in the capital improvement is $750,000, which includes $250,000 that's rolling from this year and $500 allocated next year. And then the operating budget has $500,000 allocated for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Within the $750,000 in the CIP that's just designated as affordable housing, some portion of that, up to $300,000, may be necessary to complete that parks maintenance move. However, that does leave $450,000 that you can allocate however you would want to. And if that means moving it to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that obviously is a council decision and up to you. But that is something that we can do in the budget.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, because I know there's probably some folks here interested in this issue, whether or not this budget includes the living wage increase for part-time and temporary seasonal workers?
Right now, the budget has a placeholder for those increases. Staff is still working on looking at how that should be implemented. If you have like further questions on how that, I think Kelly Dickens is here on how that, we're doing that.
But it's funded in the budget.
It is funded.
It's funded. You're saying that staff is trying to determine exactly how it would be implemented, but the funding is included in the budget.
Exactly. It is absolutely included in the budget.
Okay. Any other questions, comments before we, before I open the public hearing?
I guess one other question, and that is, if we decided, if we decided to draw from the fund balance instead of the 1.5 cent tax increase, would that affect our credit rating if we took that whole amount from there?
Yes.
It would, right? That's what I thought from this number you showed us. $700,000 would be the maximum we could draw from that.
$700,000 really would be the maximum to stay within the metrics that the rating agencies use to determine that we're at a double-A rating level of financial management.
Right.
And right now, that, that $700,000 would keep us right at the very minimum for relative growth in unassigned fund balance.
And in order to proceed with the capital improvements that we hope to do, we need to maintain that credit rating, or we don't get the interest rates, right, that we need?
Exactly. It seriously changes our model, and it would limit the amount of money that we could put into the capital improvements that we have planned.
Thank you.
Just to extend that, Cecil, I think you said, draw down the fund balance instead of implementing the tax increase. The tax increase at 1.5, or a penny and a half, equals about $1.5 million in new revenues related to that. So if you looked at the fund balance to offset that and still stay within the bond rating sort of threshold, it doesn't really offset the...
That's what I mean. You're, you're $800,000 off, even at the maximum. Yeah.
Exactly.
What would it take to get us to AAA?
You know, realistically, to get us to AAA, we would probably have to see five years of consistent growth in unassigned fund balance. That would probably mean not allocating anything from fund balance this year or four, four or five years going forward and really pushing our fund balance up there. It would mean adopting a higher minimum fund balance. At a double-A rating, the 15% fund balance minimum that we have is the minimum acceptable for that rating. For AAA, you usually see more than that. The lowest I've seen in a AAA is 16%, but that's usually a minimum that people don't stick to. Like, they have a minimum of 16, but their fund balance is usually at 20. It's like that. So that's kind of the, that's the critical piece, is that growth and that unassigned fund balance.
And I won't ask you to do this on the fly tonight, but it'll be something I'll be interested going into the future as to what the benefits would be were we to be able to make that AAA.
I can definitely talk to our financial advisors and kind of write up how we could get there and what it would take.
Thanks.
Mayor. Okay, I was going to sort of wait on these questions for a little bit later here, but since we're sort of opening the door on that one. Can you tell, tell us, I hear what you're saying, that we have to maintain a 15% fund balance to get that minimum double-A rating. Councilman Smith is talking about what it takes to get to a AAA rating. In dollars and cents, what's the difference between a double-A and AAA rating right now? Because interest rates of borrowing are near record lows right now. So what are we talking about difference-wise?
You know, I really couldn't speak to that on the fly. I'm sorry. I would have to look it up. And I hate to give you information that I don't think is correct. So I'm happy to give you...
And are we looking hundreds of thousands of dollars, tens of thousand dollars?
I really, honestly, I can't give you even a ballpark. I apologize.
Okay. But I did hear you say that to maintain the double-A rating requires maintaining a 15% fund balance. As proposed in the new budget, we have a 17.2% fund balance.
Right.
And that difference of 2.2% equals roughly how many dollars?
And that's about $2 million. But the other critical piece to understand with that is that there has to be that growth, that relative growth in the percent. And if we, if we don't keep at least 16.5% fund balance, we're going to fall below a 10% relative growth over five years. And that's a minimum for a double-A as well.
And, and so if we were to borrow from the fund balance, you provided this chart for the last year's, five years, and 11, 12, it was 15%. Next year, 15.2, 16.2, 15.1, and 17.2% in this coming year here.
Right.
It seems like we're kind of stable there, other than what's proposed for the coming year. So we maintain the double-A balance if we draw from the rainy day fund?
I think that the most we could draw and be certain to maintain the double-A would be the $700,000 that would put us at 16.5% and would put our relative growth at 10%. Because that would, that would keep us at both the minimums.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Thank you. Okay. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak, just let me know who you are. When you come up, just state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Alan Dittmore. And I had sort of a, some ideas that I put in the Daily Planet here, but I want to elaborate them. And that is that I think the friction that many progressive cities, including ours, see between police and public housing residents is more budgetary than, than the pundits are, seem to be saying to us. That, that I kind of see it like this. If you're holding up your budget dollar and you're saying, do I give you a job or you a house? Do you get a job? Do you get a house? Do you get a job, a house? How can there not be rivalry? It's like, how can that, how, that seems about as, about as harmonious a situation as the Iraqi hydrocarbon deal. That, that I just see it as inevitable. I can't, can't imagine. I'm pretty good, I have a pretty good imagination, but I can't imagine the universe in which that wouldn't lead, sooner or later, to some sort of conflict. So, because both Asheville and Baltimore, I think we're better than Ferguson, but Asheville and Baltimore are both progressive cities. We're not, what happened in Baltimore, what happened in Ferguson doesn't have to happen here. What happened in Baltimore can happen here. So, so that's different. And my solution is just to sigh, you know, rather than waving it in front of two people, we're progressives, we're for housing, all for housing. And it's not as, it doesn't leave people unprotected because look at all the other police. You have Interpol, the FBI, DEA, state troopers, county deputies, Asheville Police, and armed civilians. And okay, we can say two of them might not be ready. Okay, something happens in Asheville, you know, something happens in Asheville, maybe Interpol won't be ready, maybe the armed civilians won't be ready. But in what universe is the FBI not ready to deal with anything that happens in Asheville? They're right there on Pat Nav. You have FBI, you have state troopers, and then you're, you're whining about how, how we have to pay to protect commuters and tourists and everything, and we need the sales tax to do that. And, you know, you just argue. And it's like, you don't have to protect them, you're choosing to protect them. There's other protection. And there, and the other protection is free. You know, the deputies come in, you're not paying them, but, you know, they're county, county residents. They, they owe their protection to county residents, even when they're in Asheville. So do the state troopers, so does the FBI, so does the DEA. Do you really think the DEA is going to let Asheville projects?
Thank you. So we'll just try to go, I'll just, so Chris, go ahead.
Members of council, Chris Peterson. You know, I'm listening to some of these council members, and they're trying to blame other people or, you know, other agencies. You have $153 million budget. Now, I looked at this budget, and I looked at it hard. Your salaries, you want numbers? I'm going to give you your own numbers. Page 13, from 2012 to 2015, your budget has gone up $20 million. That's three years. That's 6.7 a year. Okay? Page 15, salaries have increased $12 million in three years. You're sitting there talking about wage. Do you know what your average salary you're paying city employees? It's $70,000. The average person out here makes $30,000. Your CIP has gone up 5.2, but I couldn't really tell because now you have a problem over here on Eagle Street, a $5 million problem. over here on Eagle Street, a $5 million problem. And I just wish one, somebody in council, will you tell the truth? City manager, I called the budget director, and I do like her, she tells the truth. I don't have problems with some of you out there, but she told me the truth. She said, "Oh, that's Mountain Housing's problem." You know, $5 million, that's a big problem. You put 2.7 in it, and you're trying to tell me you can't tell us? I heard they all have to be torn down. The black community ought to be outraged. You didn't save their heritage, now it has to be torn down. Fess up, tell the truth, don't lie to the taxpayers, okay? I'm gonna go quick, because I only have three minutes. My assessment, this council has a tremendous spending problem. You spend more than you bring in, that's obvious. Belgium beer, my God, what did we have to give to get them to come here? My God, I'm up to $90 million. Craven Street Bridge, you gotta add $5 million more on your CIP, because you promised them a bridge for their beer trucks. You didn't want them going through West Asheville. You now have to build them roads, you have to give them greenways. You're giving them a 1.7 million tax break per year, and you're sitting there talking about raising our taxes 1.5? That 1.7 per year could cover that. That's $12 million a year. The greenways you're giving them, guess what? We're gonna have to pay to keep the greenways. That company grossed over $200 million a year. Corporate welfare at its worst.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go on this side. Mr. Michaelov?
May I ask for a clarification for a start? I'm speaking for a group, three people who are willing to give up their time. May I have 10 minutes?
Yes.
Are there three people in the audience that would allow me their time to speak? One, two?
No. Chris spoke.
You can't have already spoken, and you can't plan to speak. You wouldn't be able to speak.
Okay, just two, I'll take three minutes.
Mr. Michaelov, pull that microphone just...
Okay. For 2016, the county is reducing county spending by nearly 3%. City manager Jackson proposes a 1.5 cent tax increase, and some city fees already approved by city council are significant. The city manager's solution to getting his higher spending budget approved is raise taxes and fees. My direction to city manager Jackson would be, there shall be no adverbal tax or fee increases. Give us a budget that shows the cuts needed to balance the budget by reducing expense in the general government area, administration. Adding to the adverbal tax is not a one-time thing. The tax rate is never reduced. The general fund had a surplus of $2.5 million in 2013, and over $5.2 million surplus in 2014. The city manager budgets expenses high and low revenues. A 1.5 cent tax increase is not needed. Reduce the fund balance to $15,000, and stay within the city's 15% policy, or cut general government expenses. General government growth from, in 2014, was 24.26%, $2.5 million, 9.39 in 2015, $1.2 million, and proposed 12%, $1.7 million. The city should not raise taxes and fees just to bill unneeded surplus. There's no accountability for capital improvement programs shown in the budget. All that's shown is proposed expense and proposed revenue. There's no status report on how those funds have been spent. The city council should demand such information before approving the new CIP. The city collected $2 million in 2014, 2015, and 2016, hoping the taxpayers would forget the Asheville Art Museum. They collected $6 million and never spent that money, and it's not supposed to be spent until 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, over here. You weren't raising your hand. You guys decide. Well, great, okay.
Testing.
Thank you, council members, members of the community, city staff, for giving me this moment to speak for just a second. My name is Jenny Bowen. From 2009 to 2013, I was a city staff member. I was classified as a part-time seasonal temp. I never made a living wage. I existed off of subsidized affordable housing and food stamps. My question, or hope for you all, is if the budget comes to you, and there is any classification of employee that is not guaranteed a living wage, that you send it back to staff, and you ask it to come forward again with no exemptions. The classification of a part-time seasonal temp allows staff to abuse that $10,000 or 1,000 hours line item in the budget. It's just the nature of our beast, and it's an absurd argument to say that other staff members are going to feel slighted or jaded, that these staff members are finally getting a living wage. During my time at the city, I met some of the best people I've ever known in my life, and none of them would begrudge a fellow staff member a living wage. If I have ample bread to eat, and my neighbor does not, I will never... I don't know anybody in the city that would ever say, "No, you can't have enough bread to eat." And the argument that it's... The argument is invalid if you say that it is going to classify these... It's going to inflate these people's positions. No, good work equals a good wage, end of story. We treat these people as city employees. We require same background checks, drug tests, interview skills, that all of our other city employees are required to adhere to. And if we are looking at a duck, and it sounds like a duck, then let's just call it a duck and give everybody a living wage. Thank you for your time and service to our community.
We'll just knock that row out there, so be ready, everybody on that row.
Mayor, city council. I'm here to really discuss some concerns about Article C, but I think some of my questions slash comments could be pertaining to all of this new development that's going on in terms of the affordable housing. And I do have concerns about where the money is coming from, about what Ms. Bowen, I think, was saying about what is considered, you know, the parameters of inside that, you know, who can live in the affordable housing. But more importantly, I think, is the safety for people who are gonna live in some of these areas. I live on 20... My fiance and I own 21 Oak Hill Drive, which is the property that will butt up against the entrance to this 72 unit.
We're not on Item C yet. We're on Item A, we're talking about the budget. But we're gonna get to Item C.
Oh, can I... Should I wait?
Yeah, yeah.
Or keep...
That would be helpful, so...
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's no problem.
Hello, I hope that's loud enough. My name is Sue Schweigart, and I'm from the Five Points Neighborhood Association. I'm the vice president of our neighborhood, which has about 840 residential dwellings of all different types. After rearing the proposed budget and researching some of the costs for needed sidewalks repairs in our neighborhood of Five Points, it has come to our attention that the budget for infrastructure that affects public safety and livability needs to be increased substantially, even though there is apparently some increase in sidewalk funding from last year. I have five quick points I would like to make about this issue. The first is that multimodal items in need of significant dedicated funding include sidewalk repairs, new sidewalks to complete critical linkages, repainting and improving crosswalks, including access to transit stops and greenways, traffic calming measures, better signage, ADA improvements, bike lanes, et cetera, and increased law enforcement. The second point is that dilapidated unsafe sidewalks, especially near schools such as Claxton Elementary, or along streets where many children live, such as Highland Street and Fulton Street in Five Points, are in dire need of immediate attention. The third point is that funds selected for other things that do not affect safety and mobility should be scrutinized and reduced, with funding shifted to go towards these public safety issues. The fourth point is that these infrastructure safety needs are in line with many of the goals of the city, of the Asheville City Council's strategic plan, as you will know, and also would support tourism. The fifth and last point here I wanted to make is that, since the fire station proposed for Five Points is included in the budget, can you please consider including some infrastructure improvements to be done when the fire station is built? Two critical needs on improvements related to the fire stations are: The first one is, if a new traffic signal is installed, can we please allow it to also be activated and used by pedestrians, when not in immediate use by the fire station, of course? A safer Broadway crossing is needed, and this would increase mobility and livability for many people. And since the fire station's on Broadway, and it's a four-lane road, it really is dangerous, and we need a crossing.
Wait, say where you're talking about.
The fire station that's planned to go between Mount Clair and Woodrow.
So if there's a light put in there, you're saying?
If a traffic light was to be put in, could it be activated for the fire station use, and also for pedestrians to push a button and have the ability?
Be a new light, okay.
Yeah, a new light. I don't know if it's going... We don't... Can't get information yet, so... And the second is, sidewalks are needed on Woodrow between Broadway and Mount Clair Avenue, and that's in Five Points neighborhood. And it's a narrow street, and we'd have to share it with emergency vehicles, so we really need some sidewalks on that little stretch of street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have... Can you email us those, or submit those in writing, your five?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thanks.
Okay, back there. You just decide. Yeah, okay, Julie.
Good evening. My name is Julie Mayfield. I am here tonight in my role as chair of the city's Transit Committee, and they have authorized me to read the following statement on behalf of the committee. "The Transit Committee very much appreciates that the current budget continues to include limited Sunday service. This was, as you know, the number-one priority for the art system, and you have done well to meet most of that need. We also appreciate the continued transfer of over $600,000 from the parking fund to the transit system, and the fact that the transit budget has steadily increased over the last five years, one of the few budget line items to do so. Finally, we appreciate your continued support for the excellent city staff that lead our transit system. While many improvements have been made to the system since implementation of the Transit Master Plan began in 2012, there are still many more needed before the system achieves its potential and fully serves our residents. Indeed, we remain several years behind the anticipated schedule of improvements laid out in the master plan. As you know, the Transit Committee had requested that several key improvements to the system be included in the budget. These include an additional bus on the S-3 route to the airport, later service on several routes, improved service to AB Tech from downtown and Biltmore Village, and an additional transportation planner. Implementing these requests would further advance the master plan and continue to enhance the quality of life of our citizens. We are disappointed that there was not room in this budget for any of these improvements, and we will remain steadfast in our request for these improvements in the next budget cycle. We appreciate that these continue to be challenging times, with community needs ever increasing, coupled with uncertainty as to what funding stream our legislators in Raleigh will take away next. We know, however, that mobility continues to be a top concern for people in Asheville. The National Citizen Survey results you heard about at your last meeting highlighted mobility as a major need, and the CEOs for Cities Analysis done last year showed that our bus service lags behind that in many cities we like to compare ourselves to. We ask simply that you remain committed to expanding and improving the art system, step by step, year after year, until we achieve the bus system that Asheville and its residents deserve. Thank you."
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vicky Mith. I'm Director of Just Economics, and I live in West Asheville. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments about the budget. First of all, I wanted to thank city staff and city council's commitment to providing a continuation of essential services, including limited Sunday bus service, in this budget in light of budget constraints that are somewhat out of our control due to the North Carolina General Assembly's decisions. I also wanted to thank this council and the city staff for allocating funds to increase wages for temporary, part-time, and seasonal employees. And I would like to encourage this council to apply that to all city workers. This council and the city of Asheville has been a leader in the region in terms of looking at living wage and providing living wage policy and being a leader. And we at Just Economics believe that our living wage and a living wage rate that was adopted by city council is a more just minimum than the minimum wage, and we believe every worker needs to make a living wage. And so we encourage you to continue to support that allocation of funds, as well as to apply that, those funds, to all city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you can't tell.
Hi, my name's Billy Loughlin, and I'm a resident of Five Points, but I'm a walker of the whole city of Asheville. And I just want to thank you for increasing, wanting to increase your addition of sidewalks in your budget, providing more funding for that. On the maintenance issue, it's really difficult. It would be great if that was separated, sidewalks from streets, so we could see what's going for sidewalks and what's going for streets. I'm sight impaired, you're all very blurry to me. And so having good sidewalks is important. I can't drive. And some of our sidewalks are really, as Sue mentioned, public safety issues. They're cracked, they're nonexistent in parts, they switch back and forth in streets. And I think, I see a lot of people walking in our neighborhood to the grocery stores and to downtown. And I think it is kind of an economic development issue, too, as well as public safety. So anything you can do to divert a little money towards sidewalks, I think, would be great for this community, especially as we're looking at increasing density in some of our residential areas. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thought I saw some more. Yes.
Madam Mayor, and to council, Mr. Manager, and to this great staff of our great city, I'm Elsie Ray, CEO of One Youth at a Time, nonprofit, for over 20 years, but also a pastor in downtown Asheville. May I quickly say, I must say, to our city, you have been supportive. Our mayors and council persons, you have been strongly in support of our program and what we have done. We respect that very much, and I thank each of you. When I personally call, you call back, and I really appreciate that. We have a great city. I also understand that you have not made a decision on your outside agency fund as of yet. We would, I guess my religious side of it, would pray that you will consider. One Youth at a Time, again, for over 18 years, this council and this city have supported our programs. We have touched over 4,000 disadvantaged children and youth throughout our area. As of this moment, we have addressed chamber of commerce, but as well as others, we are looking to create, hopefully we will, from 30 to 40 summer part-time jobs for our youth. Years ago, the city funded that part of our program, and about 10 or 12 years ago, it was asked that we would take on that responsibility. I stood here. So if you would... So if you would, take a second look, if you would, what we do, and if we have been proven faithful, and we feel that we hail to those that are at the least, we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, in the way back.
Hi, my name is, goodness. My name is Martin Ramsey, and thank you for letting me speak here. I'm here to add my voice to the others who have spoken before me regarding not allowing an exemption for temporary workers with regards to the minimum wage, because I think it's a shameful parsing into worthy and unworthy categories. And a lot of this has been covered already, so I won't repeat it in my own words, but without a doubt, this is within your power to do so, and I would encourage you to take that very seriously. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is it? This is it? Yes.
Hi, I'm Rich Lee, and I'm speaking in my role as a representative of the East-West Asheville neighborhood. I'm getting word that our committee is still making edits to our formal statement, so I'm just going to be real quick. East-West Asheville neighborhood was happy to work with New Belgium Brewing in the city to work on an alternate route for New Belgium's trucks using Riverside Drive. Attention has centered on improvements to the Craven Street Bridge that would not only allow trucks to pass, but would also make crossing the river safer for cyclists and pedestrians. Now we see these improvements are relegated to a note on the capital improvements list saying design for these improvements might begin in 2020. It's discouraging they weren't added to the scope of the River Arts Project underway. And while we understand the fiscal constraints, we hope that happens as soon as possible. We're pleased that the so-called flare-outs are included in the budget to let smaller delivery trucks use Riverside Drive, and we understand the improvements under the railroad bridge on Riverside R2. It's important that these improvements happen in fiscal year 2016, and if possible, that the alignment of Riverside Drive be shifted east toward downtown at that intersection for a permanent fix before the Craven Street Bridge comes in. In closing, the East-West Asheville neighbors ask the city to commit again to these fixes, making them happen where possible within the scope of RAD tip. These are necessary elements that will improve mobility for everybody by the river and will greatly help our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Dawn Chavez from Asheville Green Works, the Executive Director of Asheville Green Works. And, oh, hi. This is, I thought you were a bailiff coming to take me away. I haven't started yet. Okay, I'm here for two reasons. One is the Strategic Partnership Fund, which is part of the budget. We applied, Green Works applied, for a grant for a partnership with the city, and my understanding is that there was $300,000, over $300,000 in requests from maybe 25 different partners. And there was only $98,000 roughly available to give to all of these different worthy partners. Asheville Green Works was not on the list of recommended partners for the fund, and obviously with such a small amount to allocate, that it's not possible for all of the nonprofits to be funded. However, I'd like to make the case that, one, that that amount should be increased in the budget if possible. And then Green Works works, as you all know, very closely with the city on a number of projects, and leverages all the funding that we get towards increasing our impact across the city. We can't do this without funding, and as a strong partner with the city, we'd ask that you reconsider when the recommendations are made to council that Asheville Green Works be provided some funding.
What was your request to the HCD?
We requested $20,000.
Did you want to add anything? There was a little discussion happening.
Well, hi, I'm DeWanna Lord. I am the engagement coordinator for Asheville Green Works. I also am at this time wearing a lot of hats. I'm also the Chair of Green Opportunities and Vice President of the Resident Association for Erskine Street Apartments. And I understand that for when y'all are looking at y'all budgets, a lot of things aren't considered. But as speaking with my Asheville Green Works hat on, we work with the low-income community. We have programs that support that, on top of the plantings that we do across the city, on top of the cleanups that we do across the city. We do a lot with the city. Then when I put on my Go Green hat, Green Opportunities hat, it's like, they work so closely with the low-income community, and I feel like in a lot of times when we were talking about the budget, and even listening to a lot of people speak, the low-income communities of Asheville are overlooked. And there is programs, like my daddy taught me that, that also supports the low-income community, and has been overlooked, and is not recommended for funding through the city that needs the funding. The owner of their program is actually paying out of pocket. He works to pay to support kids that's involved in so much, all the criminal activity and things that's going on in these low-income communities. And while I know that housing is considered, in a lot of ways, not a part, they're under a different hat than Asheville City, these programs are worth supporting our children within the cities. And I looked at an article a few weeks ago that was done on Buncombe County. Asheville City is a part of Buncombe County. And looking at the poverty community that is not getting better, under any conditions, is just not improving, and are not funding the programs that is supporting these communities and helping these youth in these communities to have other opportunities, and know that there is opportunity out there greater than their environment or their socioeconomic situations. I'm sorry. It's just, is heartbreaking, and I really would like y'all to reconsider Green Opportunity and Asheville Green Works. And my daddy taught me that, because these are programs that are working with the youth that are so often overlooked or fall through the cracks in this city that we have seen from history. So please consider looking at them again, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on the budget? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Barbara, did you have some closing remarks, or?
Closing direction?
Right. Yes, council. So we have a budget before us. We've been able to review, and the next time we meet, we'll be voting on the budget. So if there are any changes to the budget we need to give staff direction now, I would invite you to speak up at this point.
So just to be clear, we're not voting on a final rate, but there'll be conversation and maybe a few nods or?
Right.
To sort of refine some of this?
What we would be looking for tonight is just some direction, like, how would you like to handle the tax increase? Do you want to use any fund balance? Do you want to look at funding Asheville Green Works? Anything like that that you would like to see us add or remove from the budget?
Sure. And to get the ball rolling, I'll start by saying that this time around, there's been, I think, more intensive one-on-one communication between various members of council and the staff, occasional one-on-one conversations between us, and there seem to be more moving parts, and in some ways, more challenge in terms of where we land on this. And I'll start with a proposal. I view the $700,000 in the fund balance that was discussed earlier that would be in excess of what is required to keep us at the double-A bond rating as being reasonable to apply in one time or in ways that would be effective for this year only, that wouldn't necessarily have to repeat. The primary way you would do that is through investment in capital assets. The Craven Street Bridge, the opportunity to use some outside grant money that we currently have available to us if we agree to take it in the near term, makes it compelling to go ahead and try to accelerate the Craven Street Bridge. So out of that $700,000, I would suggest that we allocate $500,000 to that. Another area that we, that I think this whole council is very concerned about is affordable housing. So out of the 700, I would suggest the final 200,000 there be allocated to the Affordable Housing CIP, or Capital Fund. Ultimately, there may be a mechanism to, within the annual budget, increase the allocation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and do an adjustment across from the CIP to do that. That was something that, I know there was a question to you earlier, and I think you responded in an email, and I tried to read that as I was preparing to say that, and you might want to add to that, but that would be a starting point for discussion. I know other council members have other points they'd like to make here.
To speak to the affordable housing, because the purpose for which you all want to use affordable housing dollars can't be debt-funded, it's pay-as-you-go money, so whether we include it in the capital improvement budget or the operating budget is entirely up to you on that additional money.
And, but when we talk about the, sort of, generally, operating budget items would be recurring items, but it's actually the case, when it comes to Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that we have varied that amount from year to year.
Exactly.
So if we, you know, my preference in suggesting this, and I'd be interested, Gordon, in your take, because you're the HCD pro here, but, you know, if it could go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that would seem to make the most sense, but I'll be curious to see what Councilman Smith and others have to say about that. So that's a starting point for discussion.
Well, I guess that kind of passes the ball over to me. Thanks for all the work that you've put in on this. And I guess every year, by the time we get to this point of the public hearing, I kind of think that, I think we've pretty much got this thing nailed down, and then we're here, and there's still a lot to talk about. My priorities in the budget are around addressing the affordable housing crisis, getting our public safety and temporary and seasonal wages right, walking the talk on our living wage policy essentially, and our transportation infrastructure pieces that are in the CIP and some in the, just in the general fund budget. We have the 500 set aside for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. With the amount in the CIP for the parks maintenance relocation, it sounds like there's another 450 left over there that could get shifted into trust fund for this year, bringing this year's trust fund allocation to $950,000. I would certainly be supportive of that.
Okay.
And speaking to Mark's thoughts around the 700,000, I would certainly be supportive of that Craven Street piece. And with the remainder, there's so many important places that could go. That could be more sidewalks, that could be shelters at our transit stops, which is a big priority for a lot of people in our community. It could move over to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, moving us to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's recommended funding amount of 1.1 million in the trust fund. I find that there's a lot of troubling things going on that lead us to this budget tonight, and lead us to a tax increase, and lead us to these places that I don't think anyone on this council necessarily would have chosen to be. We've got the ongoing efforts at the state level to restrict our municipal revenues. We were promised a fix to the privilege license tax that did not materialize. There's an ongoing effort to withhold equitable apportionment of the occupancy tax within the city of Asheville. There's the threat of the sales tax hit. There's a lot of uncertainty. And overall, a shift from the wealthiest people in our state and big corporations, shifting that tax burden from them to the poor and the middle class. That's what we're in the middle of. And I think this budget is, in some ways, reflective of that. I'm troubled by the, in the budget, the increase in the amount of money given to the Chamber of Commerce. It was at 60 this past year, and the move is to take it up to 100,000 a year. The EDC does a lot of great work, and they've been really good partners in a lot of ways. But then when it comes to some of these bigger-picture issues, they haven't been as good partners. When it comes to standing up for the city of Asheville, when it comes to the business privilege license tax fix, when it comes to not standing up for the city of Asheville, when it comes to an equitable apportionment of the occupancy tax, and actually actively working against the city of Asheville seeing those dollars, when their members cited transit as the number-one need in the city, and they're working against our seeing more revenue to realize better transit, it leaves me not inclined to support that increase. I would prefer a much more consistent partnership there, and it's something that I'm certainly willing to work towards, but to offer more money while they're actively working to withhold seven figures from us is hard to swallow. In regards to the strategic partnership funds, I know we're going to talk about that later, we had $98,400 for strategic partnership, and we had 16, 17 applicants. It was the most we've seen in years. And they broke broadly into a couple of categories. One was housing and jobs, and one was achievement gap stuff. Green Works kind of stands alone in their mission, so they're kind of separated out of those two categories. And we'd gone in with the priorities of housing and jobs, but then during the discussion, it became clear that Councilman Pelly and Councilman Bothwell and myself were kind of coming at it from different directions. So what you see before you is a compromise on that, with a recognition that the funds are not enough to meet, there wasn't a bad application in the bunch, not one. So I would certainly be open to seeing that number rise, to be able to accommodate Green Works, and accommodate Green Opportunities, and accommodate One Youth at a Time. And I would also be open to looking at a strategy that looks at all the different folks who came before us who are working with kids, whether it's after-school pieces or other school support, that really does focus on achievement gap, which is one of our strategic priorities in our strategic plan. We don't currently have a strategy of how to approach that, but it's something that I would certainly like to consider for the future. Thanks.
Gordon, a quick question. The amount of, the total combined applications was, we awarded, we were able to award 98, but the total combined was about 400?
I'd have to lean on Jeff for that.
It was over 300.
And if, so if you're going to recommend an increase, some amount?
Well, I think that, I think that seeing Green Works and Go through, and I'm not going to even, I'm not going to recall those numbers off the top of my head.
Green Works was 20,000. What was Go?
Go was 17.5, I believe.
They're saying yes.
So there's 37.5. And then you have all of these groups, like One Youth at a Time, that Reverend Ray was speaking of, who came in for much smaller dollar amounts, for the most part. There were a few larger asks.
We're getting clarification now.
Oh, thanks, and sorry for the short notice.
That's okay. I was prepared to do this in a few minutes, but, so, we had $305,000 in applications from 17 applicants.
Tell everyone who you are.
Sorry, I'm Heather Delashaw. I'm the Community Development Manager and oversee the Strategic Partnership Fund process. So that's the total number we were working with for the 98.4 that was allocated prior to this conversation for those numbers. You've heard from Green Works and from Green Opportunities about what their amount were. I think that One Youth at a Time was 5,000. Is that right, Reverend Ray? And there are several others. Most of them are between 5,000, 5 and $10,000 asks, 20 and 17.5 in them. Is there any other clarification around that that you want right now? We will address the recommendations themselves later, if you.
If we want to tinker with those numbers, should we do it in this conversation or when you do the later presentation?
That's what I'm asking. I mean, I could show you the recommendations now, or when it.
Maggie is going to have a heart attack if we blend her agenda all up here, so, well, we'll do the public hearing on the budget. We're having, this is part of the discussion, so. We're having, this is part of the discussion, so.
Bring it back around for business, is what you're saying, after the new business item?
I mean, I think we could talk about it here, but we'll have to go through the motions when we get to that item and single it out, so.
Do you want to see the recommendations now as part of this?
If you want to put it, plus, this thing takes like five minutes to heat up when we're, when we go blank for a little while.
Let me, as we look at this, let me offer this. We have three applicants that were turned down that have, that we've discussed here, and there were yet others.
Oh, yeah.
And so, because certain people show up at this juncture and others don't, I would, I think I'd stop short of allocating just to those that happen to have made presentations tonight or have been advocated for. So, you know, where my mind goes, Gordon, is to, out of the 700,000 from the fund balance that we would swing is to, say, pick 50,000, which is a significant increase over the 98, and put it back to a process where the HCD has a chance to, in an orderly way, distribute it. I'd like to think that the, you know, the better projects still outstanding would rise to the service.
I think that 50,000 would make an enormous difference in the community.
That, so I would, you know, the suggestion I made, Barbara, I would modify it to, I guess, take 25 each out of Craven Street and.
Just make it a little bit skinnier.
But Barbara, just to clarify, I thought that when you came up with the 16.3% or whatever, you were indicating that those funds needed to be capital projects, not expense projects.
Well, one time. Meaning one time, really. A one-time is okay in this context, because it's a strategic partnership fund and you don't do it every year.
Okay, so that would be, that would work for you.
That would be acceptable.
Okay.
I was inclined to build on what Councilman Smith said, and I think that it was torturous at Housing and Community Development to go through these requests and have so little to apportion to them, given the quality of the programs that we were having to turn down, that which have a direct effect in our community. And I'd be way happier to put the 40,000 that is headed for the Chamber of Commerce into that budget. I mean, to a degree, it doesn't matter where the quote, where this dollar, I mean, dollars are fungible, but whether it comes from the 700,000 or whether it comes from that 40,000, but I don't think the chamber has been a partner to the city in a lot of ways on big issues recently. And it reminds me of, this is kind of a field, I guess, but some years ago, the National Chamber was politicking for certain candidates at the national level, and the membership of our local chamber disagreed with it, and the local chamber pulled out of the National Chamber over that. And I see the same kind of split happening now, where the membership wants transit for, improvements in transit for their employees in the city, but the political actions of the chamber are not in line with what the membership is telling us. And maybe one way to tell the political actors at the chamber that we're with the membership and not with the leadership on this is to not give them that $40,000. That's my take on that budget line.
Okay, so, let's, to give Barbara some clear guidance, clearer guidance. We talked about taking some of the fund balance, not to jeopardize our bond rating, and to allocate some to Craven Street and some to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or Affordable Housing CIP, one or the other, and then a $50,000 amount back to HCD to administer. Do we have some consensus on that concept? And then we can talk more about the chamber piece, but do we conceptually have consensus on that, that shuffling? Yes, I'm looking.
For the fund balance?
For the fund balance.
Well, Mayor, not quite there yet. You know, what I heard Barbara tell us was that it's important to maintain that double A rating, and, but I didn't hear that we'd lose it if we drew down the rainy day fund to the 15%. And, you know, that's, that amount would be about the amount that this tax increase, the 1.5 cent increase would amount to. And so, you know, my concern is that, yes, I know that we're being squeezed by the state, and I understand that, but I, you know, I feel like a tax increase should be a last resort, and I don't feel like that we're at a place yet where we've made the case to the public that this is the, this is the final, this is the only option available to city council here. So I'm not ready yet to support a one and a half cent increase.
I'd agree with Councilman Pelly. I think that we're sending a statement right now that, I feel very cavalier in some manners, that we'll just take this 700 here, and we can move it around, we'll up this fund. I don't like this being done in this manner. First of all, maybe everybody has had sidebar conversations on how we got here and what you're willing to trade off, but it seems, and I care as much as anybody about, and was with HCD for many years, care a lot about those people that applied, but it's just not a great way of getting around this. And there are a lot of people out there that are not applying to any agencies or any outside agencies right now, are having difficult times meeting their budgets as well. So to go, I know, it's easy to say, well, it's just $22 or 42 or whatever it is to go up on the tax one and a half cents, but that's, that's okay if everybody lives in the same cost housing, but that's not the case, and it affects businesses, it affects housing, and it's, this thing with the chamber and saying that, that, and I know I'm wading away from the subject, going down this rabbit trail, but that the chamber's membership preferred how the transit so their members could get, that wasn't what they were talking about. That was a room at the Civic Center that was filled with people that were envisioning transit, meaning that they would get people up and down from the riverfront. There was a lot of things in that that wasn't what we're talking about here, so, quite frankly, the membership didn't disagree particularly, and that was not a voted-on issue or anything. And I think that we're being deceptive in what we're saying there. So I think you could help a lot of these people's situation a lot more by jobs and the five-by-five plan that they got than to say, well, we're going to take that 40,000 and put it over here. It might be far better spent to attract more jobs, to work, to do that. We don't really do that inside of our staff today. We work with EDC to get these things done. I don't want us to lose sight of that. And I just think this is a terrible place to sit here and go over sidebars and everything like that, how we, all this stuff. I just, I think we're playing with people's lives that work hard every day, and that one and a half percent does mean a lot, too.
Anyone else? You kind of touched on three different things.
I did.
I'm trying to summarize here.
But that's what's happened up here this evening. I'm not happy with that. It's just, it's too hard to track, and I can't say, I can't envision, well, let's take this 700, let's do 500 over here to get Housing Trust Fund up to what we think it should be in five years from now, and it just, I find it very difficult.
Perhaps a first step to clarifying would be to decide whether or not we're going to, a majority are going to go for the one and a half cent increase in the taxes, and then we can start deciding whether, how much money we have to play with. I mean, for instance, Vice Mayor Hunt's suggestion that we dip into the, into the reserves to fund the things that are not funded means you're still supporting the one and a half cent tax increase, because that would be money in addition to, I mean, whereas Councilman Pelly's discussion, I've had with him anyway, is the idea of dipping into that reserve is to not go a penny and a half up. So that's two very different views of that use of the reserve fund. And I think if we resolve the penny and a half question, we might then have a framework within which to discuss where we want to move money around.
So if I understand, one of the issues is, when we talk about a penny and a half property tax increase and increased revenues to our general fund, we're looking at an increase to help sustain what we anticipate to be expenditures that don't go away year over year. And when we talk about taking from our savings account, which is what the reserve fund is, it's a one-time allocation. It doesn't make up for replacing lost revenue year over year. So, you know, I had the same question, and I, you know, I had a discussion with Gary about whether or not you could, you could, you know, just for one year, let's say, avoid a property tax increase and take that savings account money and, you know, patch your budget. And, you know, and the answer is, well, basically, you're kicking the can down the road if you do it. A, you may get your bond rating in trouble, you're raiding your rainy day fund, and you're doing it to patch what is really a recurring expense. It's going to be there next year, we're going to be having the same conversation. We didn't fix the infrastructure, we just taped it up for a little while. So I think that if we're going to honor making sure every city employee is making a living wage, if we're going to honor the recommendation we've received for adjustment to salaries for personnel, which is more than half our budget, you know, for the personnel costs alone, just to pay our employees, you know, I think if we're going to ask the city manager to craft a budget that does not incorporate the penny and a half that we've been discussing, we're looking at a different budget, and we're looking at having to make cuts, and that we cannot take a million and a half from reserves right now to fix this budget for the reasons you've tried to state, Barbara. And if I'm missing some fundamental understanding about that from a finance perspective, please correct me, but that's my takeaway from the situation.
No, you're absolutely right. When I talk about the fund balance criteria and the rating agencies, the fund balance part of it makes up 30% of how they rate cities. Another important criteria is your fiscal health over the long term, and whether or not you're allocating fund balance for ongoing expenditures is a big part of that. So that's, in addition to that 30%, that they allocate to fund balance, is actually how you manage your operating expenditures year over year.
Barbara, my understanding is with about $700 million in new development projects of the pipeline in the works coming online in the next one to three to four years, that naturally that's going to translate into significant additional property taxes. And so my argument on the one-year using the fund balance, the excess above 15%, is with a recognition that in future years, we're going to have additional property tax revenues coming in based on the development projects in the works. Can you talk about what that translates into in property tax revenue if we have $700 million in projects coming down the line?
Sorry, I have to pull out my memo, because I've got some of my calculations on here. You know, some of the challenge with really looking at how much is coming online and how much we're going to receive for that is, what percentage of it is, you know, if we have, right now, there's about $550 million in projects in the pipeline that are taxable. There's more than that if you, you know, look at the non-taxable, like the Mission Hospital project, a few big ones, but 550 million taxable. Of that, we do have some development incentives out there, the biggest one, of course, being New Belgium. Most of the incentives that we're paying over the next few years are actually for projects that are in place already, but we have about 1.1, 1.2 million annually for those. And that, that is a commitment that we've made for those companies to come into our town and bring jobs, and in return, they get a rebate of that tax, we give them a percentage of that tax growth. So say they're $100,000 that they're contributing to our tax growth, and we're saying you get 75% of that back, then the net that we receive is 25. So that is, that's one challenge, but when I say that's a challenge, that's also a really good thing. I mean, we're getting these companies here, and long-term, absolutely, we will see that property tax base grow, and we'll see more money. However, it's not an easy calculation, and it's not something you can look at as like, next year it's going to be better. In all likelihood, of the 550 million we've got out there, probably 80 to 90% will actually get built. Most of it will be in 18 to 24 months will actually come on the tax rolls, so that means we would start collecting the tax in 2018, fiscal year 2018. So that, as much as I think we're seeing this great upturn, and we're seeing a lot of development and really good things happening, they're not immediate. And that's sort of one of the most difficult things I find with managing, financially managing a city, is that you see all this wonderful growth, and you see these great things happening, and you go, and why do I have no money? You know, why am I still sitting here worrying about the budget when I can see all these great things happening? And it's because cities are just always a little behind in the way we collect our revenues from the growth.
Thank you. The other concern I have, quite frankly, is if we go ahead and raise property taxes this year and the state inflicts more damage on us, requiring another property tax increase next year, that just goes from bad to worse, and I'd rather, if we can patch one more year and then see what our picture looks like next year, is rather, I mean, quite frankly, we raised property taxes two years ago. We're talking about if we're doing it again here and perhaps again next year, and I just really want to put that off as far as we can responsibly, but I think that's why I'm talking about using the rainy day balance this year to get us through one more year.
Do you want to keep it at the one and a half?
Okay, we're going to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I'd echo a lot of what Esther said is, the mayor said, that, you know, we're making an investment in our, in our staff. One of the big investments is in Asheville Police Department. This is not going to be a one-time shot to fix that. This is just the first, the start of implementing that strategic plan, and to think that we put all this effort, we've hired a new chief, et cetera, and then we would turn around and say, well, we can't really afford to implement that, and we've invested in our employees by saying, we're, you know, we looked at market rate, we're going to get people up to market rate, we're going to pay a living wage. That's, that's not just next year's issue. You know, now we've increased that base, and we're going to continue to have that commitment. You know, we, these are not, these are not one-time shots, and I'd, I hope, and I'm sure, I mean, I think this is why we are doing it, is that in three or four years, our tax base is going to be great, and it would, I'd love to be sitting on council and reducing, reducing the rate, but I think to assume that we can just live on our, live on our, it's really a pretty small excess, I just don't think is wise business.
Anybody else?
I would just, on the, on the one and a half cent tax rate, that, the discussion of that one and a half cent increase began months ago when it became clear that we were defunded by the legislature under the privileged license tax by a similar amount. So, you know, I think much, much of the discussion tonight publicly has been about raising taxes, but really, we had a tax increase in one area, and we're trying to keep our revenue base on a steady course by this measure, so that's where I am.
All right, so right now, this budget includes a one and a half cent tax increase. I've heard clearly from Councilman Pelly that he wants to hold off until next year, conveniently. He won't be here next year, I would point out, but, but if there's anyone else who wants to make that change, we'll need to, we'll need to let staff know that now. We're just doing the property tax.
I think Gwen makes a good point, and, you know, I originally was for that tax increase, but I just feel like to sit around and talk about what we're going to do with the excess in fund balance right here is not where I'd need to be, and it feels really bad when we start taking those dollars and saying, well, we're going to, we're going to take over half a million dollars and move it around, and then we're going to go up the taxes the same rate. It's hard. I really think we're investing in the city and doing it well, but I think that some thought needs to be given in what we do with that, the excess in the, obviously, Chris and I probably will definitely in the minority on this. I probably will definitely in the minority on this, so I'll be supportive of the one and a half percent. I don't want to change where we are with staff right now, but I think we need to give some more thought to what we do with that amount of money that's in the fund balance.
The only concern I have is about whether or not we're able to manage the timing in terms, if we are to give HCD $50,000 in additional monies to look at. The other, obviously, can wait. It's not time.
We trust HCD to vet those issues and they started with, I'm not sure where your dollar figure came from on.
It was last year's.
We went off last year's. That's an arbitrary figure. We've worked really hard for probably six years to bring that figure down, frankly, because some of these agencies are funded in other ways too. And we rely on the three of you to vet this, but we did not see where they were going, what the requests were for, so I would caution us to wait a little bit.
So Jan, how about this? Do you think that it would be all right, we can continue moving the budget forward, but wait in determining what to do with the 700,000 or so in reserves?
Would you like us to put that as something that you're going to allocate to one time? Or do you want to leave it as fund balance and you can do a budget amendment later? Either one of those is a perfectly acceptable alternative.
I prefer to do that.
The latter, the budget amendment?
That makes sense because we can really discuss where it's going to go.
I am.
Fine. Okay, did we, okay, so we only have, that I heard, one remaining issue and that's the Chamber EDC five by five, or whatever it's going to be called. Yeah. Funding, our funding from last year was $60,000 total. The funding in the budget is at $100,000 total. There was some concern about that, that piece.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
You know, I think I share the feeling of everybody here. We feel let down by our partners over there, but on the other side of that, there was a concentrated effort to make sure that an increment of that product development fund, the TDA taxes, would go to municipal and county governments. And that is a good way of deferring some of the cost of living here. And I do think that they are an honest and worthy partner in economic development. I think to shortchange that at this point may send a message, but it also may send a bad message. And I think that I would like to see them be very successful in what they're doing on economic development projects. And so I think that I, for one, would be in favor of living up to what we have in the budget with them.
The mayor is the assigned board member to the Economic Development Coalition over there, the funding for which we're discussing here. I'll say that in my three years there, my observation is that that is a fairly efficient but very effective effort to bring jobs. The economic development effort is focused on investment of capital into our tax base and creating jobs that are better than the average wage here. And with successes in recent years, headlined by New Belgium, Lenamar and GE Aviation, those are, those are projects that I'm convinced would not have come were it not for the concerted efforts of people who are really skillful at engaging with and pursuing leads like that. So I, you know, my view from the inside of that is that it's important not to, you know, not to mess with that too much from the standpoint of political differences, but rather to continue to support it and find ways to work, work out differences on other fronts. So I would support the current draft 100,000 funding for the EDC.
Yeah, I'm afraid that in addition to my discomfort with their position and recent issues, that I see the EDC efforts often resulting in taking credit for things that might have happened anyway. New Belgium had two cities on its list. They picked them for interstate intersections and we won because of our water and because the employees would rather live here than in Philadelphia or Pittsburgh or Philadelphia. Lenamar, the, one of the executives said that the incentives had no, nothing to do with their decision. And of course, they moved into the Volvo plant, which was, is their major, they're the major supplier, a major supplier to Volvo. So they had a plant and a workforce available that was already doing the stuff they needed to do. And GE Aviation already had a plant here. And I think that often, I think we often just give too much credit to the idea that they're cultivating outside businesses to come here. And I just don't see the investments worth it.
Mayor, I support the existing $60,000 allocation.
That's what I meant by that 60,000 too.
Well, I'm disappointed in the leadership at the Chamber and the tourism industry that they choose to define the occupancy tax as an expense to the tourism industry. The occupancy tax is not a gift. It's a fee imposed by a governmental body. I'm disappointed that while the leaders consistently point out our deficiencies, beating us up on lack of transportation, lack of parking, lack of affordable housing, they've chosen to not help us get additional funding. So I look to them as partners and sometimes that is questionable. However, I think one, one area that the Chamber has done a good job is in the Economic Development Coalition in creating good, non-tourism jobs. I disagree with Councilman Bothwell. I do think that they've played a vital and essential role in attracting new companies and I don't think the city could have just done it on its own and certainly not without Buncombe County. So I want to continue to support the EDC. And to be honest, I think withholding the increase or even withholding the current level of funding wouldn't have an effect on the Tourism Development Authority or the use of the occupancy tax. So again, I've had conversations with people at the Chamber and at the TDA and I think that they do understand, that they do have a partnership with the city. And I do hope and believe that they will start to move more funds to city-sponsored projects. So I would support the increase to 100,000.
And to council as a whole, the ask is for 100,000 a year for the next five years. I know that these decisions don't bind feud with councils and that we will revisit this decision year after year. It's my hope that if the amount is increased this year, which I'm not supportive of, but if it is increased, that we will be casting a very discerning eye on that same funding next year to determine, you know, whether we've gotten to a better place.
What I would say is that I would agree with the disappointment over the conversation with regard to the room tax, which is a bill pending right now in the legislature. It's gone to conference and it would increase Asheville's room tax from four cents to six cents. And of the two cent increase, a penny and a half would go to the Tourism Development Authority, which of course is an independent authority, for marketing the additional rooms that are going to be coming online in Asheville because of all the new hotel construction. I believe there's something like 1,600 rooms coming online. And a half cent, which is about 1.15 million, will be added to the 2.3 million already going into what's called the TPDF fund, which is a fund that'll fund capital projects, some of them are capital projects administered by basically a subcommittee of the TDA. And one change that the TDA was supportive of, that the city appreciates is taking for-profits out of that running for that TPDF funding. It will no longer, if this bill were to be enacted, you would no longer see for-profits competing with nonprofits and governmental entities, mainly the city, for the, for those funds, which will now be somewhere north of, somewhere around 3.4 million if I'm adding it up correctly. You know, we, we made the case that Asheville's different. We wanted to see something more progressive done with our room tax. We see the hotel industry as, while a benefit to many in our community, not, not an industry that supports great jobs and ultimately results in a large group of, large portion of our population that needs subsidizing, whether it's through housing or transit, and therefore not, not really a great growth area for the economic health of our families in this area. So we were looking for a creative way to support the folks that work in that industry. And the room tax is, is an obvious place to look. There are other taxes that are reasonable places to look, like a food and beverage tax, which Asheville doesn't have, but that's apparently a non-starter in terms of, it would require legislation. So that is not a conversation the legislature is willing to have, apparently for any city, including ours. So I, I think we see, see this different as leaders of a city, leaders of a county. We, we see this as a different issue than the leadership of the TDA and the Chamber. And we're working, we've probably talked more about this on a philosophical policy level than we ever have before. So we're working to better understand each other's positions. And unfortunately, the city just doesn't have the political leverage it needs in the legislature to, to get us legislatively to a place that we think better suits the needs of the city and our people. So what we got was, was a bill that's kind of on the, it was a compromise, well, it's not the best compromise, but it represents something of a compromise. So I'm torn about this issue because I am disappointed and I'm disappointed for the citizens of Asheville who have been very vocal about their concerns about the growth of this industry. And we've tried to work hard to address that. The problem I have about the funding piece that we're talking about tonight is the disconnect between what we're really concerned about, and that is using a room tax to support folks that work in the tourism industry. And what this funding really does, which is supports Economic Development Commission in part and the Chamber in part, which looks to bring quality jobs to our area like New Belgium or GE Aviation or Lenamar. So it's a little bit of an apples and oranges to punish the funding for an EDC when we're really mad about this room tax situation. And I think that ultimately, no good comes out of a complete stalemate. And I want to continue to be able to work with the partners in our community because we simply have no other choice and it's probably the best thing for everyone. So we've had a long time to be able to mull over this request to bump this funding from 60,000 to 100,000. And I think that it's incumbent upon the city to demonstrate our part of the bargain, our part of the partnership. And I think that we're, we need to be the better person, if you will, in this debate and express our anger clearly, our disappointment clearly, and keep chipping away at a really important issue for Asheville. That was me saying yes to 100 grand.
Thank you.
Okay, I gave a long speech. I wasn't going to do that, but you guys, you guys made me do it. Do we have anything else to resolve on this budget?
I think the last thing I need is to know if we want to reallocate that $450,000 that's available in Affordable Housing CIP to the operating line for.
So just to clarify this, the stuff in the Affordable, in the Affordable Housing EDCIP and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, it isn't going to be in the form of loans.
Right, because of the projects that you want to use it for are not fundable by debt, so we would use pay-as-you-go money.
So there was $750,000 allocated for the parks maintenance relocation to eventually issue an RFP for housing there, which leaves $450,000 of affordable housing money that we could leave in Affordable Housing CIP for future projects or go ahead and allocate into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a total of $950,000 that we can allocate next year to go directly to the building of affordable housing.
And the demand for projects that would be eligible and qualified for the trust fund would exceed 950 you expect next year?
My guess is that it can and probably will. If we don't find that we have the projects to allocate towards, council, well, HCD and council will be able to see those allocations prior to their being made and make decisions about that. If we decide not to allocate it, it returns to that Affordable Housing CIP.
You know, this is getting a little ahead of ourselves, but the redevelopment of Lee Walker, the public housing complex, would include mixed income and lots of affordable housing, not just traditional public housing, but other units. It would be the kind of affordable housing I believe that we would all want to see and it would have the benefit of undoing a kind of housing product, affordable housing that really isn't serving the community well. So the question I would have is, you know, when I think about the city partnering with the, the housing folks is to, is that it probably will require significant money. So one approach would be to reserve it in the CIP, which is one of the options here, and build toward possibly doing Lee Walker. We can always transfer it later to the trust fund.
Well, I guess what I'd add there is it's my understanding that MHO and the Housing Authority are going to be applying this January for their tax credits. So they will be coming to us in this budget year seeking trust fund monies.
Trust fund money for that project and not capital?
I don't know what it's limited to. I don't know how much that's going to amount to, but I do know that they're going to be applying for their tax credits and they're going to be seeking that local match.
If I may, the most flexible option as far as that money would be to leave it in the CIP because at this point, it is just listed as affordable housing. From there, it is completely up to council what happens to that money. So that's your most flexible option, but either one is obviously perfectly acceptable.
We could, if there's demand to the trust fund, we could do a mid-year budget amendment to.
Absolutely.
It'd be really helpful for applicants to know what's there prior to applying because there's some folks who are pretty good at this now and they determine projects in part based on what they see there in that trust fund.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to hold off on making the allocation. I hear you, but also since we haven't really seen numbers from Lee Walker, I'd almost like to sort of wait and see. And then if it doesn't look like they're going to come forward with that, then I think mid-year, we could flip it into the Housing Trust Fund. Just, just because I feel like it's kind of a big unknown, I have a feeling it's going to be a big number.
Would it be helpful to hear from Jeff Studdinger right now, just to get a little more input on this before kind of giving Barbara final direction? I don't know if Jeff's still in the room. Jeff isn't.
What can I respond specifically to? Because you've addressed a lot of, you have a lot of questions here about what may or may not be happening in terms of.
Right, there's a lot of moving parts. The revitalization of Lee Walker Heights is obviously in play. We are obviously trying to substantively address the affordable housing crisis by getting units on the ground. Can you give us any guidance on how you would best use these dollars?
First, I'll speak about, about Lee Walker Heights. I think it is correct that they envision an application for a first phase of tax credit development to be made in January. And as part of that, that they'll be looking to have a commitment from the city of Asheville, Buncombe County, and any other funder who can provide flexible financing with little repayment needs during the term of the tax credit as part of their application because ultimately, it's the races to the least amount of tax credit per unit. Frankly, that will not be the only need for that project. There will also be a conversation will happen with the city about infrastructure. And depending on the scale of the project that's essentially developed, I mean, I can't even predict what that total ask will be. I would say that frankly, on a 60 to 80 unit tax credit project, a commitment made typically in the, of federal funds with the home fund. in the, of federal funds with the home funds, we won't know what we'll have available until a federal budget is passed, so it's kind of not too helpful to talk about that now. But an Affordable Housing Trust Fund ask that's in the neighborhood typically of about $10,000 per unit will be the commitment that they'll be seeking in order to have a competitive application. Now, the, what we will not know is until August of 2016 whether that project will have competed successfully there. And they will not ask for the actual use of those funds if successful until sometime in calendar year 2017. So just to, so you understand the nature of the flow of funds, that the actual cash won't be needed until then. And I'm not quite sure how that flows into the commitment of dollars in between CIP funds and Housing Trust Funds. I think as Barbara explained, in part, part of the issue with using CIP funds is our understanding it has to be used for capital projects. And if it's pay-go, then there's more flexibility, but if it's borrowed, there's less flexibility into the use of those funds. In fact, we're having a meeting with finance and real estate and community development tomorrow to talk about those issues and how they impact where those funds and how they flow. I think that if we look at Housing Trust Funds, one of the benefits that it gives us, at least if we adhere to past practice, is that those funds actually, because they have been operating funds, which are pay-go funds essentially, they give us the greatest flexi, they have given us the greatest flexibility in terms of use. Four years ago, we used Housing Trust Funds to purchase the Villas property, which today you agreed to sell to Habitat for a minimum of 55 new affordable housing units. So there was a flexibility inherent in that use that really made that project be able to happen today. It's a little bit difficult to predict in June what the pipeline will be for affordable housing development, seeking Housing Trust Funds however, except for the Lee Walker Heights project we just mentioned, as we get to the time when we typically accept applications, which is in the month of December, with decisions in January, again, typically so that they will be available for those projects that absolutely provide the greatest leverage to our funds, which are those funds, those projects that raise all that equity through the low-income housing tax credit program. I don't know if I brought any clarity to you, but these are, it's, I'm sorry, it gets a little nerdy as we get down into it, but the, I think the other things that we've talked about from a policy perspective, and I think, maybe I can't answer the question, but I can at least raise these, is that you've talked about taking advantage of real estate available to purchase today. That could be used in two or three years for affordable housing developments, that's the land banking concept. We've talked about how we could invest potentially in private sector developments happening today and preserve greater affordability. That's a very, very early concept that isn't fully developed and would be new in terms of practice, and it's going to take a lot more research. I think that's a couple, a year at least away before we can understand whether that's available as a practical application for us. And we talk about the potential of using city land. And that's where the original idea of putting funds into the CIP, the EDCIP was, is that if we can use city land and a capital resource, we may be able to accelerate the use of some of that city land by doing things like collaborating with, in a good city, interdepartmental collaboration to make sure parks maintenance can actually move to a new facility, leaving open a very desirable site for affordable housing in a very, very locational efficient place in our city as a first step in a model for future ways of perhaps repurposing and looking at what land is best suited for that kind of purpose in our city.
So remind me what the decision is that-
So the question before us, and by the way, if you've never had the opportunity to be on HCD, understand that this giant brain is at the table each time, and it's, he understands these systems in ways that I don't even know that we could aspire to. But we've got 500,000 currently allocated, there's going to be 450, there's 500 in the trust fund, there's 750 for the parks maintenance relocation. Staff is expecting that 300 of that may be necessary to finish that job and get it RFP ready, leaving $450,000 that we could leave in CIP, although it sounds like what Jeff is saying is that that, those dollars might be spent a little further out, whereas if they're in trust fund this year, it may provide more flexibility in how they're spent.
But he's saying he doesn't know what the pipeline will look like, so can't tell us.
There's no crystal ball.
Yeah.
And so if in December, you get all sorts of requests, and you now see what the pipeline is, and you realize that Lee Walker maybe doesn't need money tomorrow, can we transfer the money from the CIP into the trust fund? I mean, is there, is there anything that would stop us from allocating between CIP and the Housing Trust Fund, one way or the other?
That would be a question I'd have to give back to Barbara.
Right, so I have that same question. Can we, if we don't do anything now and we see $700,000, let's say, in applications, can we do an amendment mid-year to transfer those trust funds over if we really feel like it's warranted?
If, you know, if upon seeing the applications, that's the case, however, we will likely see fewer applications if the number is lower.
Well, I mean, I think we can make it known that if you've got something really worthwhile, we'd be willing to look at that, but I'm, I am concerned that we're going to get a big ask on Lee Walker. We really want to be able to meaningfully participate in that, and I don't want to, I don't want to put funds out there that are kind of nickled and dimed and lose an opportunity to really make a big, you know, anyway, that, I would rather just-
All of these dollars are going to turn into affordable housing.
Right.
They're all going to turn into affordable housing, so.
That's right. So in summary, leave it like it is, right? Okay?
Have a change.
And that covers everything-
You brought that up, I just want to point that out, you, you know.
Any more questions for me, or you just want me to go away at this point?
I think we can officially close the public hearing now on the budget. Okay, yay, thanks. Thanks everybody for duking it out, staying here.
I have one comment that it's not, doesn't make any difference, it's not going to change anything, but I, because people spoke to this idea, I think we're agreed about the pay increases for our employees and getting to living wage, or, yeah, living wage for all of our part-time employees, and I think that's really, really important. That dollar figure for getting to that amounts to a very small part of the tax increase we're talking about. The ones for temporary employees is about, what, 250,000? I think that's a quarter cent on our taxes. It's not much to me to pay $10 more on my property tax in order to not be bidding down the wages in Asheville. The city should be supporting better wages in Asheville. We support that when we try to get businesses here that pay better pay. We should be paying our own employees a living wage. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think what we're going to do is take a quick break. We do have a closed session, and we have several more items on the public hearings agenda. So we have a motion to go into a closed session, ready to go.
Okay, I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 10, three. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318 dot 11A1. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including a lawsuit involving the following parties, Gannett Pacific Corporation and the City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 318, I'm sorry, dot 11A3.
Second.
Okay, we're going to go into a closed session for 20 minutes, and we'll be back after that.
Do you need a vote on that?
I need a vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. We're, we're ready to come back to our city council meeting to resume. Members have thinned out substantially here, it's looking like. All right, the next item is a public hearing to consider rezoning property at 1 Buffalo Street from Neighborhood Business District to RM8 Residential Multi-Family Medium-Density District. How do you say your name?
My name is Vidila Sathika.
Slowly.
Vidila?
Vidila.
Vidila, like Godzilla.
Oh, okay, got it.
Oh, we'll never forget that.
Vidila Godzilla. And then how do you say your last name?
Sathika.
Sathika.
So I'm a new member of the planning department. Mayor Manheim, members of council and the public, this is an application for rezoning of a-
Is this your first time?
This is my first time here.
Oh, all right, okay, welcome.
Thank you. I think this image is pretty dark, so it's going to be hard to see, I'm sorry about that, but I have another one, so I'll talk you through it. So this is an application for a rezoning of a vacant property located at 1 Buffalo Street in West Asheville, from Neighborhood Business District to Residential Multi-Family Medium-Density District. I'll show you the boundary here. It's located, the text for the street is in black, so you can't tell so much, but it's at Burton and Buffalo Street on the east, it's bounded by I-240 on the west. You can see this billboard here facing the highway, and it's equidistant between Patton Avenue and Haywood, so it's right in the, right in the center. These are the zoning districts. Two parcels here are Neighborhood Business, and it's surrounded by residential neighborhood. There's a small public right-of-way to the south, south side of this, that's 12 feet wide, but doesn't go anywhere, it runs right into the state's highway right-of-way. This request to rezone is consistent with RM8, which is the surrounding neighborhood district. This image should be a little clearer for you, which shows here the little hatched lot is within the two lots that are Neighborhood Business, but everything else around it is RM8. So it's sitting in a residential site, in a residential context, but the owner of that lot can't build a home in this residential district because it's zoned for Neighborhood Business. So they've come to us to request a rezoning to the zoning district of the area, which is RM8. We believe that the rezoning would allow for the lot to be developed for housing, which is consistent with the city's comp plan, encourages infill redevelopment in areas within the existing urban fabric that are vacant. The rezoning would create a non-compliant 40-foot lot, but that would be okay provided that the future building meets setback requirements, so it's a legally valid rezoning. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request from Neighborhood Business to RM8, and finds that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and council's strategic operating plan by encouraging the adaptive reuse of vacant property and by promoting compatible infill development. So this concludes my short report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So where were you most recently a planner?
New York City.
Oh, wow. We're moving up here, getting kind of sophisticated urban.
Coming up in the world.
I was going to say, it's going to be a lot different here.
For the Department of Transportation.
Oh, okay, wow. Did you guys not warn him about the whole new person thing here? No? Okay. You've done quite well. All right, any questions of Mr. Sath-
Sat.
Sath.
Sathika.
No? Okay. And if the applicant wants to speak, that's fine, probably not necessary, but fine if you want to briefly speak. I don't even know who the applicant is, maybe just raise your hand. Oh, it's you, okay, all right, I'm looking. Nope, that's fine, that's fine, that was optional, that was optional. Okay, do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Neighborhood Business to Residential Multi-Family Medium-Density RM8 District.
So I'm forgetting in my haste that I need to open the public hearing.
Okay.
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Public hearing is closed. Okay.
Okay. I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Neighborhood Business to Residential Multi-Family Medium-Density RM8 District, and find that the request is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans because it, one, encourages the adaptive reuse of vacant property, and two, would promote compatible infill development within the urban fabric of the city.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Okay, Item C, a public hearing to consider conditional zoning of property located at 29 Oak Hill Drive from RM16 Residential Multi-Family High Density District to RM16 CZ Residential Multi-Family High Density District, conditional zoning for the construction of 72 residential units in three buildings with associated infrastructure with conditions for reduced building setbacks, reduced parking counts, and increase of residential density. And Alan Glines is here to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public. The project is located at Oak Hill Drive, which is just off of New Lester Highway. The property is zoned currently, RM16 as are surrounding properties. You'll notice that there are some commercial properties located on New Lester Highway. This does abut a cemetery to the south and east, and a railroad right in this location here. The railroad does affect the prop, the use of the property. This is in, our Exhibit B map, which shows more of an aerial use. Surrounding uses are primarily single-family residential, although the whole area is zoned RM16. This is the Sebastian Army store here and other commercial uses on that corridor. This is, this is a site plan for the project, I've got it upside down. Oak Hill Drive is located on this side, and this is the railroad area, which railroads come with a right-of-way, which precludes use of the area around the railroad for other development uses. There's a, there'll be a new sidewalk along Oak Hill Drive for the portion of the property fronting on Oak Hill Drive, and an internal driveway and parking areas with a fire department turnaround here, another segment of parking here. We're basically at 16 units an acre, they are seeking 19.41 units an acre. This is an allowable deviation because it's a conditional zoning, you all may approve that. They are also seeking setbacks from the outside property lines. They will be providing setbacks at 20 feet for all the buildings, but when a single building has at least 14 units in it, you have to have a 40-foot setback. They're constrained in use of the site because of the railroad, they have to really squeeze things in to other locations on the property, so they're asking for a setback reduction through the conditional zoning process. Finally, the UDO provides a formula for parking based on the land use and the number of bedrooms in those apartments. The UDO would suggest that 86 units are required, and the current plans show 81 spaces. We're asking that that be approved as proposed, the site plan showing 81, which is reflected here. So this is an infill project, we're looking for this type of thing in locations that has, for areas that have sufficient infrastructure. The comp plan recommends these types of units, multifamily infill, especially affordable units, we're constantly talking about that. We're also in an area where we can support that through transit and other neighborhood services. Your strategic operating plan, you recommend sort of matching up with affordability and economic mobility, and this plan would do that through its site and other location considerations. The project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 6 with a vote of 5-0 and recommend support. There were a number of residential neighbors from the area who came to that hearing, and the primary concern was concerns about existing traffic using Oak Hill Drive, some people do use it for a cut-through. So that was the one issue that neighbors noted, that it was kind of a challenge or concern for them already occurring before this project's been built. Staff also recommends approval of the project, and I can answer any questions for you if you have any for me.
Thanks, Alan. So if people needed more parking, where would they park?
Well, we have at least one per unit, at least one per unit. The 24 of them are one-bedroom units, they could be a small, like a household, that could be one person or two people, it's true. So we do have at least one per unit, but essentially, we're sort of illustrating them all here on-site, there's not really a lot of other places. You know, the requirements in the UDO include open space standards and other tree-save areas, so you have other areas that you reserve on a property that you can't really use for other things like parking.
And they can't use the railroad right-of-way?
It has a grade down to the railroad, excuse me, and that would make it a challenge. And also, what I want to say too is, there's a really nice landscape buffer at the front, I didn't really go into a lot of detail with that. There are houses here on both sides, but there's a lot of trees that are existing today, and we hope to save some of those, aside from putting the new driveway in and that kind of thing, we'll give credits for any of those trees. We have a nice buffer at the front, but you might could park there if you weren't doing a landscape buffer in some ways.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? I will open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Ward Griffin, I'm the applicant, one of the principals in the development group, appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you. Thanks also for your support previously for the awarding of the Housing Trust Fund dollars. Getting this project to this point has been a culmination of a lot of work by a lot of different people, including Councilman Lothwell, Kelly, and Smith through ACD for the past year and a half, and we're really excited to get to this point. I think we've got a great site and a great design, and look forward to kicking it off in the near term. We're even more excited to be part of providing a solution for additional affordable housing and workforce units in Asheville. As an Asheville native, I've witnessed firsthand how the largely great and positive changes in our city and popularity of our city have continued to contribute to. The affordability problem over time, as an employer of 20, all making above the living wage, I see my employees struggle with finding suitable and affordable housing here too. We hope that our model for this project is one that can be replicated many times over, providing more and more affordable units. This project has cooperation between the private sector municipalities and nonprofits, and we think that's the right way to provide solutions to our community's problems, not putting the burdening on any one entity. We are excited about the prospect of being a long-term partner with the city and the county for providing affordable housing in our community. As noted in the staff report, we've currently got 29 of our 72 units remaining at affordable level. In addition to this, as Alan alluded to, we're in the addition of completing, in the process of completing our land use incentive grant application, where we intend to commit another 10-plus units to affordability, bringing our overall percentage well over 50% for the overall project. Our hope is that you'll find our request for this conditional zoning reasonable and measured. We feel none of these changes would negatively impact the lives or property values of those in the community around us. As Alan mentioned, if there has been one continual concern that we've had from the neighbors, including Jesse, who didn't have the endurance to stay with us, I got to speak to him during the break, but it's all relating to the existing problem of Oak Hill Drive being used as a cut-through street. So we share that concern of Oak Hill being used as a cut-through. Our tenants, 24 of them are going to be families whose kids are going to be waiting for buses and walking to surrounding stores, so it's my understanding that Oak Hill is relatively high on the priority list for traffic calming measures, and we certainly support that and hope to see that soon. Furthermore, we're prepared to commit $5,000 towards the cost of installing those traffic calming measures if we can see those coincide with the units coming online later, early next year, so we hope that's something that can be considered. Thanks again for your support of our project before and now. Little additional kudos to Jeff Stodinger and Heather Dillashaw, I think you've seen tonight already how great they are, and we certainly wouldn't have gotten to this point in this project without their help, so happy to take any other questions about the project. My engineer is here as well, if there's any technical questions that you'd like to ask.
Ward, thanks so much, this is a real important contribution to an important need in our community. Just a couple quick questions for you, is there going to be a property management on-site?
Yes, there will be, actually, there won't be a full-time property manager for all 72 units on-site, but we will have areas for case managers, we will have some property management of one of the buildings on-site.
Great, good, good. And I guess what I understand from Alan is interior sidewalks and then a little piece it looks like on Oak Hill Road where you, I guess that's, nothing against you, but I don't know how helpful that'll be, there's just a little piece on Oak Hill Road, but I understand the need there.
I'm happy not to build it if you don't really want.
I'll have questions for Jeff after this, thanks.
Anybody, questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? This is the public hearing, so this is your chance to speak on this item.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna comment again. Gwen asked before why I didn't do a Greenway spiel, and so I'm gonna do one now as representative of the Greenway Committee. I want us to be here for when developments interact with the Greenway Master Plan, and in this case, the railroad is the potential future West Asheville Rails to Trails Greenway, and that's one of, if any of us are here when that becomes available, you know, humanity has still survived through whatever apocalypse happened, then I hope we're committed to making sure that that West Asheville Rails to Trails Greenway happens out to Anka.
Barring an apocalypse, sounds good. Anyone else wishing to comment?
I just have one thing.
Yes.
We provide on these, with the conditional zoning is a B1 conditions list, and Mr. Griffin has just mentioned that he'd be willing, I just confirm with him to provide 5,000 towards traffic calming measures.
That's what that says, we'll take your word for it. Okay. Yes, yes. Sorry, I got caught up in the...
I've mentioned before that reducing parking requirements had a lot of indirect benefits, but if you, one of which is the buses, if you really want to get people out of cars and onto bikes and buses to pay bus fares and make the bus and support the bus system and support the greenways and reduce traffic on Oak Hill, what really gets people out of cars isn't to limit the housing supply, it's to limit the parking supply, and that's exactly what you do, you reduce the parking requirements, it's when people have trouble parking that they use alternative transportation, especially as cities grow, that's the real motivator. So, and you don't even have to, you know, regulate, or you don't have to do that actively, you just have to stop actively creating parking and, you know, building parking garages and stuff. You can take a passive role, and that, and it's a passive role of government, gets people into alternative transportation, does exactly what you want, thanks.
Anyone else?
First, a comment, with the 174 units on our consent agenda that the Housing Authority is working on, with the 55 units that Habitat for Humanity is going to be building at the Villas, and with these 29 affordable units, just wanted to say that tonight, we will have cast votes on 258 units of affordable housing, 24 of them affordable to people at 50% of AMI or below, it's a red-letter day. And with that, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for Oak Hill.
Let me just officially close the public hearing. Anyone else? Did I miss anybody? No. Okay, public hearing's closed.
On 29 Oak Hill Drive, from zoning RM16 to the RM16 CZ, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the proposal provides 72 residential units, and of these 29 will be affordable units which are needed in the community. Two, the site is conveniently located for transit and transportation facilities, and three, shopping and employment centers are located nearby.
Second?
Mayor, questions? Jeff Moore? Jeff, so where is Oak Hill Road in the queue on traffic calming?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, Jeff Moore, City Traffic Engineer, and it is currently number three on the list.
Okay, so what does that translate?
I can get a little bit more in detail. It is our intention to have as many as possible done by the fall, we're in the petitioning process now where we're defining the petition areas, getting those out to the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But these should be well within the current funding for this fiscal year.
Right, and that $5,000 contribution, how does that help?
I'm not sure, these are already funded, we could take it and put it back into the fund, I mean, that's certainly an acceptable way, or if there was another idea of somewhere that money could be used, et cetera, something like that, but, you know, we're perfectly happy to get another $5,000.
Great, and then I imagine some of the residents will not own vehicles and will require public transportation and sidewalk, what's the schedule on the Lester Highway sidewalk?
That is a very good question, I know that it's being looked at now, I know it's in progress, that's about all I can tell you, right off the top of my head.
Ken?
Ken would be a good, because he's worked a little closer with the DOT on it, I do know that it is, it is being worked on.
Okay. Gary, let's just, if we can get Ken to follow up with us and just remind us of the New Lester Highway sidewalk timing, right? That was the question?
Yeah, and then, okay, so I imagine some of the residents will be using public transportation to go into town, as I asked earlier, there's not projected to be a traffic light at this intersection here, so residents will have to cross Lester Highway to catch the bus. That's not a long-term solution, how do you see this playing out?
That's a DOT highway, of course, so we would have to partner with them, work with them, as the demand grows, the likelihood of getting something there would increase. One of the things we're working with DOT on is how to help our residents safely cross streets, so having more people that will be crossing, especially with transit stops, does, you know, affect that more favorably. I did do a quick traffic study on this, a very quick trip generation, and the 72 units will add about 60 trips in a peak hour, that's not including those that would rather take transit, so this is worst-case, about one per minute. I didn't look at how many pedestrians it will generate, but I think it's safe to assume a lot of people are going to be walking, walking down the transit.
The bus line does run out Lester and back, right?
Yes, sir.
So there might be a way to catch the bus on this side of the road and just take the...
It may not be that far of a trip.
I mean, it doesn't go, yeah, it reaches city limits before along there.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
We were with a motion and a second, we had a question, does anyone else have a question? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, item D, a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning at 673 Sand Hill Road to allow the development of one additional residential unit in an unfinished space in an existing building. Jessica Bernstein will unravel this mystery for us.
This is an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning back in 2007, and just a little history, there's two, the project site consisted of two parcels, this parcel to the west was conditionally rezoned from RM6 to RM8 in 2004, and that included the renovation of some existing units as well as the construction of new units. And then in 2007, this second parcel, the second half of the project, was conditionally rezoned from RM6 to RM8, and that was for the construction of those units. So this site is built out, as you can see on the Exhibit B map, it is operating, it's an existing apartment complex with 48 units, and that is the crux of the mystery, that the conditional zoning was specific in allowing 48 units. There is an unfinished space in Building G, you can see right here, that, the current owner is requesting to just finish that space and turn it into an active residential unit, but because that conditional zoning specified 48 units, they need to come through the amendment process to have the new...
And where were we? We were with a motion and a second, we had a question, does anyone else have a question? No, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, item D, a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning at 673 Sand Hill Road to allow the development of one additional residential unit in an unfinished space in an existing building. Jessica Bernstein will unravel this mystery for us.
I will, hold tight. Uh, this is an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning back in 2007, and just a little history, uh, there's two, the project site consisted of two parcels, this parcel to the west was conditionally rezoned from RM6 to RM8 in 2004, and that included, uh, the renovation of some existing units, as well as the construction of new units, and then in 2007, this second parcel, the second half of the project, uh, was conditionally rezoned from RM6 to RM8, and that was for the construction of those units. So this, this site is, is built out, as you can see on the exhibit map, B-map, it is operating, it's an existing apartment complex with 48 units, and that is the, the crux of the mystery, that the conditional zoning was specific in, in allowing 48 units. There is an unfinished space in Building G, that you can see right here, um, that unfinished, the current owner is requesting to just finish that space and, and turn it into an active residential unit, but because that conditional zoning specified 48 units, they need to come through the amendment process to have the new, um, residential limit be 49 units on the site. There's not a, a stitch of site work that's associated with this application, the parking complies, the landscaping complies, all of this was done back in 2007. Uh, so the project was reviewed by the TRC in May, it was approved with conditions, the proposal received unanimous recommendation of support from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 21st of May, I have not received any comment from neighbors. The staff does recommend approval of this amendment request for the additional unit, as it's an existing development that's currently operating. Additionally, the, um, the current operator is a provider through the Housing Authority, so they have currently between seven and 12 units that they, um, contract with the Housing Authority to provide, and that includes HUD, VASH, VA supportive housing units for veterans, and also they have tenants through Homeward Bound, so they are already helping to work on our housing needs. So staff does recommend support of the, the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, is there anyone wishing to comment on item D on the public hearings agenda? I will close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request for 673 Sand Hill Road from RM8 CZ to RM8 CZ, and find that the request is reasonable, and is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that, one, the development is existing and established through the 2007 conditional zoning, and, two, the one additional unit will be in an existing building and does not require any site work or disturbance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And our last item on the public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to Section 7-11-8B4 to correct an earlier amendment that provides a clarification for a threshold for when sidewalks are required, e.g., a typo. Yes, okay.
Thank you, and I'll make those a little shorter next time, those summary statements. Uh, yeah, we are asking for a correction to what apparently in 2009 made a change back to a 50% threshold, um, the UDO intent is to have a 75% threshold for when people improve their site and have to provide, um, other site improvements such as sidewalks. So this, this amendment would make that correction, so that there's two sections in the ordinance that you refer to, and they both are consistent with the 75% language. We did, uh, review this, of course, with the, um, with the Planning and Zone Commission, and they did recommend, uh, support for that change.
Are there any questions before I open the public hearing? I'm gonna open the public hearing, anyone wishing to comment on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
You need to go through the...
I'm sorry, I'm going to... Comp plan staff, sorry.
Sorry, okay, say the long motion.
Approve the proposed amendment to Sections 7-11-8B4, as outlined in this report, and find that the request is reasonable, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plan, because it supports the construction of needed community infrastructure and provides a correction to the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have completed the public hearings agenda, that brings us to new business, the first item in new business is something we've already exhaustively talked about, but it is a resolution authorizing the approval of the 2015-16 Strategic Partnership Fund Grants, Heather Dillashaw is here to talk about it.
I am. I took advantage of your, um, closed session to show you, um, some of the organizations that we were talking about, that this was the full, um, application pool.
Oh, that's helpful.
Um, so you'll see on this really quick Excel sheet, um, that the, all the requests we got totaled $315,885, that last column is the recommendations you have before you that, that go to the amount that we were given to stay within for that, for those applications. And since we have already talked about that exhaustively, I will stop there unless we have additional questions.
So all of these were submitted to Jeff through, uh, an application process into Community Development Department, and, uh, the Housing Community Development Committee got to review those applications, um, and this was what we landed on, if y'all have any questions about kind of process, or how we got there, anything on this list, I'm happy to respond.
The, the only one I had a question about was tell me about the Blue Ridge Food Ventures.
The, do you want me to say a little bit?
Go for it.
That's a, Blue Ridge Food Ventures is a support shared-use production, uh, it's gonna, it will support shared-use production at this, um, this organization through 90 unique food and natural products businesses, so it's a different way, a, a different kind of model of producing food, it's, it's part of the local food businesses, those kinds of...
And it's a, it's a one-off, one-year grant, they're not gonna be recurring, they're here for one time, it's gonna support 40 full-time jobs over the course of the year, there is a representative from Blue Ridge Food Ventures here, if you'd like to learn more about the, the ask.
Not particularly, I just was curious about, about it.
What I will say, um, just like with the other applications that we receive, um, in the Community Development Division, um, you know, there were criteria that they all had to meet to be able to, to be eligible for this funding, and all 17 of these applications, as Councilman Smith said earlier, met all those eligibility requirements, um, and all the ones that have been recommended meet council priorities, um, as do the ones that were not funded, so. A three-to-one decision is hard.
Yep.
So it, it seems like, to me, Mayor, where we are is that, earlier, as we discussed the budget, there was consideration that we might add funding to, uh, better address, you know, the, the needs expressed up here, uh, we did, our, our budget, um, advice to staff did not include, include, uh, that funding for now, but rather, we talked about a budget amendment later to address this, so it seems to me that the thing to do now is go, I, I'd suggest we approve this, uh, array as recommended by the committee for now, with a view that we'll move to, uh, perhaps address other needs with additional funding later with a budget amendment, and that we would allow HCD to advise us about any additional funding, it might be a two-month cycle once we get around to it, but I, I do think if, if we're gonna do that, we ought to make sure that we're intentional about timeframe to do it, and, you know, not just...
It sounds like a good, a good process to be able to approve these tonight, if council can offer some direction as far as what amount they might be willing to do a budget amendment for, so HCD can have a guiding number, that would be helpful, and we would likely consider the rest of these applicants using the, the funding that council has, has decided on in our August meeting.
August, that's what I heard.
You know, we heard the $50,000 figure would...
I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the numbers, it's kinda small.
This would not come up at the meeting next week.
Um, I, I, I suppose it's possible that Jeff could squeeze it in, but we actually just pulled something off that agenda because it was so big.
What are you doing in HCD?
Trying to get it done.
Okay.
You know, we talked about the $50,000 figure a while ago, that seems to be a good landing spot, it's kind of a midway point to where we were.
Well, well, the idea, though, was that we were gonna use fund balance for that, and you wanted to have a more deliberate discussion about it.
I'd like to have them more deliberate, they need to vet it and see who they're gonna fund, but they need a, they need a figure to shoot for, too. If we're gonna give it, give them some money, make it meaningful, and, and I hope you would use it for those people that have partnered with us before, that have actually worked and have a history with.
Thanks for the guidance.
I, I think so, too, I worry about defunding programs that have previously relied on our funding, if we feel like they're still doing a great job and living up to their end of the bargain, and we're able to find additional resources, I would wanna try to continue that relationship, hopeful.
The other question is, sorry about that, um, is if we are gonna use fund balance for this, it would have to be unique or one-time, not recurring?
Yeah, I mean...
So, I think...
I mean, it's a grant awarded, it's discussed and awarded every year, there's no...
And so you could just say that even though we funded people in the past, that it's okay, that it still fits a criteria?
Yeah, some of these are gonna be coming back.
Right.
Homeward Bound is gonna keep coming back, um, well, some of them are one-time, some of them will be coming back, but then, when you're talking about these enduring partners, like One Use at a Time, like Greenworks, like Go, some of these folks who have been there doing the work, and that's what I'm hearing from council, is they'd like to see that work continue.
Right.
I'd, I'd suggest the 50,000 as the target number, and I think, we can...
We'll use that target.
Four, five, nine, six, seven, nine, to 50,000.
And, um, so Heather, does, uh, does August seem like the reasonable timeframe, or can we squeeze it in for a June agenda?
I think squeezing it in in June is optimistic.
We're, we're really optimistic.
So I think, so the, so I think the further, sorry, um, the further direction that staff would need to squeeze it into a, a June agenda is, is very clear parameters around that $50,000, um, because there's over $200,000 that have, have, has not been funded, um, and so to go back to those applicants that have not been funded...
I would not want to open it to go back to applicants, I'd look at those, those applicants that we have.
That's what I'm asking, so that, some clear direction from staff, that there, that there is no...
We're not reopening the application.
That's what I need to know, is that there's really clear parameters from the committee and that you want us to give you, um, that we could do by Tuesday.
In that case, you know, we've been over these, we have really looked hard at these already, I don't think it has to take a large part of our meeting.
Jeff, Jeff may not be glad I'm standing up here, it's...
No, Jeff has just given me the look like, Gordon, didn't we just have this conversation? Um, let's squeeze it into June, Jeff, let's not leave people hanging.
Okay.
A six-hour meeting is okay.
A lot of these entities have July 1st fiscal year starts, and so it'd be helpful for them.
And there's a couple people here who presented on that list, okay.
Right, and I, I wanted to, so I think what, what, what we've said is, we're gonna look at an additional 50,000, going back to HCD for the next June meeting, uh, not reopening a whole application process, just reviewing the applications pending with the additional resources. Heather, tell everyone what your job title is now, you've had a, kind of a promotion, and it's all very confusing.
Community Development Manager.
Community Development Manager, and so who's doing homelessness?
Christiana Glenn Tugman.
Okay.
She, so she, I know...
What's with this, the names, I'm never gonna do, okay.
Right, hers is easier than Vidilla's, but, um, the, so I oversee her now, so I still am connected to it, but...
Okay, okay, that, just thanks for that clarification, we were doing a little email...
You're welcome, and there's still a lot of crossover, because she's new, very new in the position, so it, it's okay.
Okay. So we don't, um, we, we do need to have a motion on this, so, so this isn't on our public hearings agenda, so if I have a motion to approve this, which is what I heard...
I would move to approve the 2015-2016 Strategic Partnership Fund Grants.
Second.
Second, okay, so I have a motion and a second, and if you want to provide comment at this time on this item, you can, um, you've heard the plan, so you can also opt out, okay, you can, yes, okay.
Another minute to say thank you for this consideration, uh, everybody is doing a great job, I'm certain of that, we have been working with so many down through the years, but for you, as our leaders, to consider this and place it back to the faithfuls on the staff here, saying a lot to us, whatever you do, we'll give it our best, we're in it for the long haul, and we have no other choice but to serve this present age, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm always wishing somebody would do the division and express a lot of these numbers as percentage of budget, or, or a fraction of budget, and if, my understanding is it's around 100 million, and I emailed you something of this effect, and I think my math was wrong, that 12,000, which is the one that interested me because it would include municipal contraception, um, 12,000 over 100 million is about 1 and 8,000, 315,000, the whole request is about 1 and 400, so one part in, 1/400 of the budget, 1/8,000 of the budget for the YWCA. Um, this is, these are very small numbers, uh, this is, this is pocket change, when you're talking about the entire request being 1 part in 400, you could do it 400 times over again, every year, um, to, to realize how small these numbers are, um, and, uh, and in many cases, they can save, uh, they can save many times what they cost. Thanks.
Here I am again with no head on, as a resident of the low-income community, and I would like to speak to that, all of the programs up here, and that especially is geared towards the low-income community, I have heard a lot of budget stuff in here, and a lot of considerations, the affordable housing, the money moving there, money moving here, it's all kinda overwhelming a little bit, but at the same time, I really would like to ask the council to give consideration with funding and everything y'all doing with y'all budget to the low-income communities, because we are so often overlooked, and, and it's just what it is, when we think about the Fair Housing Act, I am from the low-income community, I got a job with Greenworks, so I'm, I'm making a living wage, and when I went to apply for affordable housing, I wasn't qualified because I live under public housing, and it, it's more than just looking at it from a top picture, from, from that top view, you really have to look at the effects of these decisions on us, so oftentimes, marvelized or undeserved, just being honest, we are so often overlooked, and when decisions are being made about moving money here to help this, or moving money to there, when we talk about Le Walker Heights, and I'm on the Residence Council, and I'm also the Vice President of the Resident Association for Erskine, and I work with Le Walker Heights, I got family that live in Le Walker Heights, when we talk about that, and it becoming fair hous, affordable housing, how many of those people, 98 families, are going to be able to get back into that once it's been, been redeveloped? And it's stuff like that, the questions that we ask, we ask in public housing, it's not, we, I'm just saying, it's just questions that people in these communities are asking, like, why we, our family, we gonna move, we gonna get placed over here in a community that we might not be a little comfortable with, maybe a worse community, and we getting placed in this situation, and then we can't go back like we were promised, or whatever the case may be, the policies and procedures and things that are being, that are in place, and not saying that y'all put in place, they been here for a while, let's be honest, they been here for a minute, it's, when y'all making these decisions, I want y'all to always consider it's a low-income community in Asheville, a great number of low-income residents in Asheville, you can't exclude public housing, this, we are Asheville, I live in Erskine, I live right down the street from Mission, right behind, we also, AB Tech, you cannot exclude the low-income communities who are making these decisions, you bringing in the breweries, and they do the job fest, how many of the low-income residents really get a job through these companies? Is there a benefit to them getting a, oh, let's give him a little prize for hiring a certain number of people from the low-income community, people with criminal records, who got situations, or whatever it is, whatever the barrier is, to get, to, for them to hire them so that they can have a job with his transportation records, whatever the case may be, are we, I just want y'all to consider, when y'all making our decisions, consider the low-income community, consider the programs that's helping our children, we don't want our childrens growing up and being involved in this violence and all this stuff that's going on, most moms and most of us are single parents in this community.
Thank you, thank you for making your comments.
Well, thank you.
Um, and I'll also say that, um, this is gonna be considered one week from today at the Housing Community Development Committee meeting, um, myself and Councilman Bothwell, and Councilman Pelly, who sit on that community, and we would be, we would welcome any insights or input that you might have in regards to this, we're really easy to find, if you wanna email or call us, please do.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you had a comment? Yes, you got a comment?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Peterson, and I'm representing Blue Ridge Food Ventures. I just want to thank you for funding, providing this funding. I want to thank you on behalf of the more than 250 entrepreneurs who have started their businesses with Blue Ridge Food Ventures. A lot of these are people who have been laid off from their other jobs, who have come to decide they want to start their own business, and I just want to say thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Strategic Partnership Fund Okay, then anyone else have any questions on council? Nope? Good, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now I get to turn it over to the Vice Mayor for the discussion of the chairmanship of the Civil Service Board.
Mayor, this is the one board where city council appoints the chairman. Last year, we...
No, we do ABC board, too.
What's that?
We do ABC Board Chair. I'm just, just to correct you.
Just to correct you.
In this particular case, we adopted the approach a year ago to poll the members of the committee to find interest in picking the chair, and in this case, one member, Alan Coxey, expressed interest in the chairmanship. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that council appoint Mr. Coxey as chairman.
I so move.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Wait, Rich might have a, he's the only one.
The greenway runs a quarter mile from Mr. Coxey's house, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we've got a number of commissions and boards where Boards and Commissions Committee considered approaches to interviews and appointments, and I've got a series of recommendations to make. African-American Heritage Commission, there is one vacant, one position coming up. Marvin Chambers holds that position. He is interested in reappointment. The committee recommends his reappointment. That's a motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Board of Electrical Examiners, there are five seats. The following three people are interested and eligible for reappointment, David Martin, Gus Sims, and Ken Frisbee. Additionally, there are two open seats. Committee recommends appointment of George Grigg and Charlie Wheeler, along with reappointments of those previous three I mentioned, and that is a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Civic Center Commission, there are three positions to fill there. Two current members are eligible for reappointment, and the committee recommends the reappointment of those two, and those are Joel Storo and Chris Bubinik. Mike Burke's seat is open because it's expiring. He's not eligible for reappointment. We recommend appointment of Greg Duff.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Downtown Commission, one vacancy was Bruce Hazard's seat. Committee recommends appointment of Brent Campbell. That is a motion.
Second.
Any discussion there?
I wouldn't mind interviewing Constance Richards.
Well, we talked about that, and Constance is a great person. She also presently serves on the...
Public Art.
Public Art, and Bruce Hazard was a design professional, which is what Brent is as well, so they do a lot of design review and stuff, so...
And Constance is interested in the appointment to the Public Art. We'll cover that in a minute.
But, I mean, you know, we want to do it.
Well, so she expressed interest to this. I noticed on her Public Art, I don't know, the attendance wasn't great there, so it doesn't, I didn't know if she actually wasn't very interested in that board.
67 percent.
I'll withdraw.
Any other discussion on that? I think we, yeah, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion there? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Historic Resources Commission, committee recommends reappointment for two spots, and that would be William Atkins and Tracy Rizzo.
Second.
Discussion there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Multimodal Transportation Commission, four seats to address. Committee is going to recommend reappointment of the following three people who are eligible, Julie Mayfield, Mary Weber, and Don Costellic, and there's a vacancy, which is the seat that represents the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. We, there's been a request that we postpone filling that seat until the Neighborhood Advisory Committee is able to offer recommendations, therefore, the recommendation of the committee is simply reappointment of Mayfield, Weber, and Costellic to their three seats, and we'll deal with the other slot once we get recommendations. That's a motion.
I noticed Don's attendance was only 58 percent. Could you speak a little to the committee's recommendation, given the poor attendance?
Well, my view, you know, I'll let Chris and Jan speak, but, you know, Don has got significant expertise, and is very active between meetings, and I believe the commission regards him as a great resource.
He's extraordinarily valuable, I just want him there.
Well, typically Maggie, when we have a, we reappoint someone with low attendance, she writes in a letter asking them to step up a bit on that.
And she said that she would do that today, right?
Okay.
Yeah, Don travels a lot with his work, but he is very active outside of the actual meeting, so...
Hope we'll remember that when it comes to P&amp;Z appointments.
Well...
Okay, so we have those, that recommendation of those three, did we have a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Neighborhood Advisory Committee, four spots. Two, committee is going to recommend two reappointments, those being Spencer Hardaway, Pastor Hardaway, and Joe Fiacola, both of them seek reappointment, and we recommend that. Additionally, two seats open, and we recommend the appointment of Greta Bush and Phil Lenowitz to those two open seats, and that is a motion.
Second.
Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Noise Ordinance Appeals Board, we have two seats that are to be open and vacant, and the committee recommends the appointment of the following two people, Todd Levin and Robert Glenn. That is a motion, as usual.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public Art and Cultural Commission, there are three slots in play there, two for which the committee recommends reappointment, those being Sharon Trammell and Constance Richards. A vacant seat, that we recommend the appointment of Kay Johnson Bowles to, and that is a motion.
Second.
Any discussion of those appointments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Last but not least, the Recreation Board.
Looks like we need to re-advertize for them.
Seven. There are seven, seven spots to deal with. The committee recommends that we re-advertize for four of the slots, and that we reappoint the following three people, Barry Munt, Forrest Merrithew, and Robert Pierce, and that is a motion.
Second.
Any, go ahead.
I think we talked about Hutch Kern and Josh O'Connor staying on there until we had replacements for them. Was that what we agreed to, Maggie? Yeah?
Yeah, and that's, I think that's the normal, the routine thing anyhow. We don't let them look still, they're replaced, so. And I think that's part of the, generally part of the ordinances, the creation of these things as well. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Maggie, is that a record number of appointments to boards and commissions in the history of the city of Asheville?
End of the fiscal year, and the end of December is when you guys get the most of them.
Not a, not a speed record for the length of this city council meeting, though.
Well, nice committee work to make that as efficient as it was.
Depending on which clock you go by. We have reached the public comment portion of our agenda. Any, the one member of the public who's left, would you like to? No, passing. Okay, well, we managed to wear everyone out.
Starting with ourselves.
Starting with ourselves. Okay, so we're adjourned.